Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, May 2. At 6:25 PM, I call this meeting of the Brookfield Select Board to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Annual town elections will be held on Monday, May 6. Polling hours at Town Hall are from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. For more information, please visit the Town Clerk's webpage at www.brokefieldma.us. Please remember to vote. And a reminder, town offices are closed on Monday, May 6 for Election Day. So the only thing that will be going on in Town Hall that day is voting. Brad, will you warrant us up?
Yeah, FY 24-22 withholding $29,383.85. FY 24-21 withholding $31,800.57. FY 24-22 payable $191,470.97. FY 24-22 accounts payable $414,448.98.
All right, thank you, sir. First up on the agenda is the SunFusions Host Community Agreement, but I believe Mr. Fromm's lawyer's not here. So could I get a motion to take things out of order so we can get things done?
So move.
All right. All in favor of taking agenda items out of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll take a little guidance. Shall we, since I believe Ellen is here, should we go to that matter first?
Sure.
All right, just to show, be courteous to the scheduled people who are here for the meeting.
This is the first one.
All right. Ellen? Would you come up and join us, please? Thank you. And Brad, I'm checking here. I think you're more familiar with this than me?
No, I think there was two separate things.
Okay.
And what I was gonna talk about was gonna be very brief.
Okay.
Because of the nature.
All right.
So we got the email about the issue with residents eligibility. And this is something that she's worked on with Kelly. It's been something in progress for months now. And I believe is it in the field?
No. I don't know. I honestly don't know. There's too many fingers in the pot and too many... So I don't know what you have compared to what I have.
I only have the conversation you and I.
Okay. So you got a phone call from someone?
No.
How did you know about it? Did you get this package?
No. You were, you had given it to Tom or something?
No. The individual gave it to Tom.
Yeah, there was a written package that was delivered to somebody on the board.
So again, I don't...
I got a phone call.
It's in your packet, Tom.
You got a phone call.
I got a phone call.
Did you get a phone call from the individual or did you get a phone call?
I got a phone call from the individual that had said that there was a packet submitted to Select Board and gave me the substance of what was in the packet.
So you've looked over the packet?
I have not gotten anything from the packet.
So again, I don't know what's in the packet unless it... Mary is the one she sent to my boss at the Mass Department of Veteran Services.
My understanding is it's the same one. But I haven't seen it, so...
Okay, so... So again, I'm confused why Brad called me. Was it from a phone call from Beth? So I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out.
No, it wasn't.
No, I asked for this to get put on the agenda because I received a phone call from the individual that had submitted a written packet because they said, hey, this packet is coming. I want you to be aware of it.
Okay.
And, and I asked for it to be placed on the agenda. And I don't, sorry, I don't know why you had, or who had contacted you or what.
It was in regards to the email from...
Right, okay.
Yeah. Not, from not the individual.
Gotcha, okay. Yep.
Okay, so...
So for this to move forward, Beth, I put this on the agenda at your request. I didn't realize that it was... So I was on the expectation that you had already, were familiar with the details of what was in the packet?
I didn't have what was in the packet.
Okay, that's...
I was told I would be getting a copy of it. I hadn't seen a copy of it around.
Well, she put specifically to Tom, I believe, and that's why I gave it to Tom. But there is an extra one because she also left one for Kelly. If you want, I can go grab it for you.
But fundamentally, on a very high level, it sounds like in talking to the individual, from what I understand, their situation is somewhat water under the bridge, right? There's been a state determination or what have you. But my concern is, is it sounds like we're taking a very, like, different approach with our veterans in town right now from a process perspective where it's like in aerospace, like we talk about inspecting to accept versus inspecting to reject. And it sounds like that there's been a, a very significant step function change in how we're making certain determinations. And at least the individual claims that she's in town, at least on the weekends, still owns the property, still is a registered voter in the town of Brookfield. I don't know if she's got a vehicle and pays excise taxes. And I know we've got other people in town who, you know, we question their status, right?
For the matter of sensitivity to the issue in the case, is there any exemptions we can put this under or maybe?
You mean executive session?
Right.
I don't think so. I've read, I've read all the available reasons for executive session. I don't think this...
Yeah, I don't think this falls under it, so...
Can I, can I just tell you, there's no, no... I don't treat any client any differently unless they need more assistance than the one before. This is my bible. This is what I, I follow. What have... I am new to the program, as you know. You hired me sometime in October. I didn't start till December. I, I, it took me a long time to learn the program because I didn't have an instructor. So I did have the first, the first of January. January 15, my trainer came out to my home and we, and we went over all my paperwork. So I called the, every individual in December and said, I'm gonna be coming to your home, getting this paperwork. This is what I need. And I showed up at everybody's home in December. I showed up in January to collect all the paper that I gave them the checklist for. I started with that. My trainer came out in January. She sat down at my kitchen table and we inputted all the information. She gave me data to put into the program for that individual that was misleading because the paperwork that I had received. Not in person. I've been in this program for five months, working for you guys for five months. Never met the individual in five months. I've met every single one of my clients here in town and in Westbrookfield at least two times, no less than two times, except that individual. I put the information in. The individual contacted me and said I had put the, I had shorted the check. So I went into, looking into the data. And the reason I shorted the check was because the individual was supposed to apply for something called Mass Health Buy-In the year prior when, when it was being run by somebody else. I called the individual and asked them if they had applied. They said they didn't know. I said, well, we have to apply. I tried multiple times to meet with the individual to put in a new application. The individual lives nine minutes from my home. I tried three times a week for five months to meet with this individual. Never met with the individual. The paperwork came to this office. The paperwork came, and I didn't know this till it started to get a little on the ugly side, that all the mail was coming from, from out of state.
It was being post, the postmark was out of state is what you're telling us?
Correct.
Thank you.
Everything will thank. That if you read the letter that I sent the individual, it's legit. So I sent them a notice of, a notice of intent. This is the reason that your benefits are gonna be cut off, if they are gonna be cut off. I have tried repeatedly to meet with you. I, all your prescriptions and doctor's appointments and everything are out of state. You can't get Mass Health Buy-In because you're doing your business out of state. So all of this, well, I didn't mention the Mass Health Buy-In, but all of this, it was legit. Wrote it into the notice of intent, certified it, sent it to the individual. She had 15 days, that they had 15 days to comply with the information that I had been repeatedly asking for. 15 days came and went. I sent the notice of action stating that I have to cut you off because you did not send me this information. This is all legit. All the paperwork is right here. You're very welcome to look at it. So I followed the regulation by, that I follow CMR 108. And it states right on there in...
And this was something that you had been seeking Kelly's guidance on?
Yeah, so, so again, so I tried up until March 30, repeatedly to try and meet with the individual to get this straightened out. Or March 20, sorry. And then I called the town administrator. I said, this is where I'm at. I cannot legally pay that. Because I can pay it, but you're not gonna get reimbursed from the state. So Kelly said, show me the proof you have. I showed her the proof I have. She said she agrees with me. My town, my authorizer at the state level had told me what to do. Check to see if the data was correct, meet with the town administrator or whoever I answered to, which I was told from you guys, it was the town administrator. So I met with her, discussed the whole process with her, what I did. On April 1, I sent the first notice. April 15, sent the second notice. But as, if you read it here in, in the CMR 108, it states... Sorry.
Anytime they're outside of the state for more, or anytime they're out for more than seven days, they have to report?
Correct. But again, I didn't know that until the multiple times of trying to get with the mail.
So services are being rendered out of state?
Correct. So I can own a house, and I do, or did, own a house in another town, another state. I can pay that mortgage. I can pay that water bill. I can pay anything and everything. But if I don't live there, that's not my residence, correct?
That's my understanding.
So that's how the state follows it also. So and again, I asked for, just prove to me you paid, you paid the mortgage in there and not somebody renting it. And I couldn't get it from any of the paperwork that I received.
Yeah, there is a letter as of recent, as of April, from the daughter stating that she's been paying that.
Right.
He saw it.
So I haven't gotten that one yet.
So that was one of our discussions somewhere in the midst between the 1st and the 30th of March. And if that happens, I have to recalculate, and if you want, I have that paperwork in here, recalculate your benefits. If you're receiving benefits because your income, your debt ratio, your income to debt ratio is different because somebody else is paying those bills, then you're not gonna qualify for our program.
Because you're receiving, you're receiving a gift or payment.
Yeah, it's, someone paying your mortgage is effectively income for you.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So all of this was discussed.
So all, so you're saying all of the veterans' benefits, including the, what does the reference, the...
Again, I don't know what letter you got unless it matches the one I got.
It looks like it was the same.
It looks like it's CCD used. So the, the scale of the benefits is also related to, to income and debt to income ratio?
Correct. So some individuals need more fuel assistance or support, some shelter. So if somebody has a mortgage that they can't afford, so you take, and it's not a calculation I come up with. I put it into the DAV system. And so if you have, you only have, say, $2,000 coming in and your mortgage is 500 a month and your fuel is 600 a month, or blah, 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 by the time you're done, some people we do, we have, get shelter expenses. They might have to pay their rent if they don't have a mortgage. They don't have to pay their mortgage, that kind of thing. But some might need fuel assistance. We also get them into a fuel assistance program, but they might still need a supplement. The individual we're talking about is my only, medical only. So that we, we supplement their medical expenses. But it's, you still have to put into that, that you're, the equip, into the equation, your shelter and all of that. Because if you got 3,000 coming in and you got 4,000 coming out, you need our help. That individual qualified for that part, medical only. But once you start, you have the 3,000 coming in and you don't have a mortgage and you don't have electric bill and you don't have a phone bill, whatever the case may be, then you don't need our assistance anymore. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But again, we can take all that off the table. The fact that the individual has left the state for more than seven days disqualifies them.
Is it seven days in a certain time period or seven days in a row?
Seven days in any time. But it's seven days in a row, but I've been dealing with the individual for five months. Five months. I live eight minutes up the street. Never met with the individual.
They've never...
I've seen you in town four times more than I've seen that woman, so...
And so you've attempted some meetings and they've always, and what has been their response to the meeting, meeting requests?
One time I did cancel. I mean, I'd have to go back over, well, I do, I do have a...
I'll take a general idea.
So, so the first time, the first time, the first time, I wanted to meet. Oh, I go by the Town Hall all, all the time. I'll drop, drop it in your box. So again, didn't notice for the first two months that this stuff was coming from New Hampshire. It was just in a mail envelope, what have you. This went on for multiple time frames than it was. Well, when, when I had to get her into the Mass Health Buy-In, my authorizer was not gonna approve the medical payments, the payments to, to, to Social Security or the reimbursement of Social Security paid to their health plan. So, because they hadn't done, so they told me, you have 30 days to get an application in. So I said, okay, let's start, let's meet. And I, I'm not in town today. Okay, I can be available Wednesday. I can be available Friday. I can be available Monday. Okay, now I'll be available on Saturday, so on and so forth. The one time the individual did say should meet with me, I had an emergency. I had to take one of my other veterans or go with one of my other veterans some, to, for a health care, health check. And it was all day. I called, I texted the individual and I said, I'm stuck. I don't know what to do. Well, I, I, I'm only available till 3 o'clock. So I did get finished with the individual, told them their package, texted them and told them that, I'm sorry, but I could meet with you on Saturday. And I got, no, gonna go home, go back to New Hampshire on Sunday. So I made every attempt. I made more attempts to see her, that individual than I did to see my own child this month, these last five months. So I, so I followed the regular procedures. Again, that I was instructed to by my authorizer, by the town administrator and by CMR 108.
Is there anything in the, in the packet about, about the, the, the other, the other party's attempts to, to meet with Ellen?
Not with that level of specificity. The one place where there's agreement is regarding the, the scheduled time and the, and the conflict based on the needs of another veteran.
I do believe I have all the dates and times that I...
Are we allowed to get commentary from the town attorney?
Yes.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but this veteran was in the Town Hall every single month. I was unaware that anyone was trying to reach her. I would have at least passed along a message. But I've met with her once a month.
You met with her once a month, sorry.
The one person you're speaking of, I have met with that individual once a month until the benefits were shut off.
Yeah, so until this month.
If this individual comes in to pick up their veterans' check every single month.
Correct. She calls, she calls for the, she calls to make sure the checks are click, cut, and then she comes down. And I've tried to meet with her on those days also.
Camped out next to the box of checks?
Pretty much. You can ask Amy. I don't know if you were there when I was trying to meet with her. I tried to set up an appointment on January 3, January 8, January 11, January 18, January 22, February 12, February 21. That's when I got the phone call saying her check was short. The 23 of February, she called because of a different reason. I told her I could meet with her then. March 6, March 6, that was, I think I returned her call. February 23, I tried to meet with her. And I gave her, I even changed my schedule around so that I could be available. And I got, I got doctor's appointments, doctor's appointments, doctor's appointments. So I wrote down all the dates and tried matching them up to the receipts I received. And again, all receipts were from New Hampshire. So if you take the data that I have every day that you...
Can you, can you tell us what town in New Hampshire the service provided?
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, it's in there, okay. What town is it, since it's in there?
East Hampstead.
Yeah.
That's, and again, that's where she has her mail forwarded from here. So, so under the assumption that it was me, I came in here and asked where they, were they registered or what their census, what the census. And that's, what do you call it? Open information or what have you. And it states that her, anything from here is mailed to that East Hampstead address. So, so again...
Right, so seven days out of state, over what period of time constitutes a discontinuity benefit?
Seven days.
I think it's seven continuous days.
Yeah.
Represents a, a note, something that requires notification, if I understood you said, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it. Maybe it's smarter on CMR 108.
And there isn't, and there isn't...
I'll leave you my copy and come back for it on Monday.
And there is an appeals process to it. There is an appeals process to it as well, but it looks like they're not appealing.
And I do, if your, if your information is correct, I want you to note that I did not call her a liar. I'm assuming when I said, I just need proof that you pay these bills. I'm guessing that's constitutes, but now, in every, every one of my other clients, I mean, you can contact every single one of them. I'll give you their phone numbers. I've met, been to their homes, every single one of them. I met with, if I had to go back for any information, I went back for it. Everybody, I do have one check that is messed up and it was my fault. Why it's, well, it's not. I, I didn't have enough information. So I shorted her check because I didn't have the information. I went back to get the information and I'm trying to straighten out her check. But that's the only complaint that I've had outside of this.
So all...
And we're trying to remediate that.
Yeah.
And so all, so other than that one check that was, that you said was shorted, all the other checks have been paid on time or when they expected? No one said that their check has been late or that it wasn't, didn't come when it was expected?
Yes, this month. It was late because I had emailed the, your accountant. And she, what do you call it, wasn't attached. So I called her and we rectified it.
Yes, ma'am. You know Lori about, right?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No, I didn't need to.
Ellen, this is Lori. Lori's our town accountant. Lori, this is out.
No, no.
So it's just, since, since you're mentioning...
Oh, you look so different. Sorry, Lori.
She looks even better in person.
No, I was thinking Amy. Yes, in her closet, so... But yes, I screwed up this month and it was, I forgot to attach the...
The work for the...
Yeah, spreadsheet.
So, hold on a second. So, so to, to address issues separately. We have the issue of the complaint from the party who Ellen has found to be a non-resident and is taking procedural action consistent with that.
Yeah, I think, I think the challenge, I think, I think the challenge is the difference between a resident, by one definition, and a resident vis a vis that particular regulation. So that's where my confusion came in, is that the, the bar for residency...
Is much stricter.
Is much stricter there. This is from a standpoint of standard residency law. Right? Because, you know, if somebody owns a house in Florida and owns a house in Massachusetts...
If an individual in this program owned a house in Florida and owned it, they would not qualify.
Right.
This is a Massachusetts benefit.
But even if they just visited a friend in Florida who owned the house that they were staying at, the being there, I mean, my friend's mother goes to Florida for months on end. And, but she's a Brookfield resident, but she's not here for three, four months of the year.
And they wouldn't qualify in that program.
And they would be gone, and my understanding is they would be out of state too long to qualify for this program if they were otherwise qualified.
Right.
It's like, so it, it seems to me that, I don't think there's anything actionable. I'm not seeing anything actionable bias here.
No, I don't think it's actionable. I think there's, I think there's a bunch of opportunities for education, right, for folks that are receiving the benefits, you know? And, and part of it is probably the learning curve and the relationship building as a new person in a new position. It's, there's always, there's always a challenge with that, right?
Correct.
And, and people's approach can be very different.
I came in here with almost no information. I had to go hunt down the clients. I didn't know, I, I did have addresses from one of the spreadsheets that Lori sent me.
Yeah, I thought we had overlap between Gary and...
No, I don't think so. Was there?
No.
Yes, a month.
What, what month was that?
December. Gary did the month of December.
So he didn't do it with you? He just did it?
No, he did not, no.
Okay. Or you didn't do it with him, either way? Either way. So, got it. So the handoff was fumbled even though we had an overlap of a month, is what he tells me.
So again, I didn't know the procedures. I didn't know Lori pays one, do you pay both? So I got two towns. So do you pay payroll and AP? Okay, so the other town doesn't, Westbrookfield doesn't. So it's a case of, didn't know who to contact for AP. Didn't know, this, she sent me the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet on the new computer that Westbrookfield bought me. I couldn't manipulate her spreadsheet. So she printed, she printed them out for me. So all of that came into effect also. Finding out, getting the laptop, getting access to the, to the Department of Veteran Services program. I still need to get access to another program. I'm sorry, I keep pointing at Holly because Holly's been my mentor. Holly is the VA, Veterans Agent for North Brookfield. So she's been a big support team to me. So it's, it's all that. Getting to know the clients, getting to know who owns their home, who rents, who gets fuel, who gets, who needs this, that kind of thing, telling them what they need. So I might give them a checklist and say, I need three copies... So I might give them a checklist and say, "I need three copies of the last three bank statements." Well, Gary let us slide, they only made me give you one. And I'm like, "Okay, but I can't be doing that because I need to reference back and make sure that you're not hiding money." Or you're, or that you, you had extra money hidden or whatever. I have to follow the rules. So, yes, I did let some slide and only give me one. But then I had questions. What is your mortgage? What, you know, you give me a mortgage statement that says you own $2,000 a month, is that one month or two because you skipped last month? I don't know. So all of that came into effect, trying to get training.
Well, that's pretty clear from the statement. I mean, that's a little bit, that's a little bit of dissembling because in a standard mortgage statement, it's going to tell you what is due that month and what is back due. Right? I mean, that's, I mean, a mortgage statement's a mortgage.
Right, right.
It's going to tell you, it's going to tell you that information.
Right, but again, you know-
So let's, let's make sure that we're using the right examples. The bank statement one month back wouldn't necessarily tell you the mortgage statement.
No, but-
But if you get an actual mortgage statement, it's going to tell you what's, what's the current-
Right, but the checklist does say three months. So I asked for three months, someone said, "Oh, let it slide." It's due at the month of January. I'm not supposed to pay February until I have all the statements that I had, all the paperwork that I had asked for, right? Somebody might be getting a check from the VA, somebody might be getting a military retirement check along with their social security. Well, it hasn't come in yet. Can you let me slide? So, I don't know, can I let them slide? Do you know what I mean? So all of this came into effect. Holly will tell you if you, I got the speed dial, Holly on speed dial, Holly, can I do this? Tracy, can I do this? I didn't have an authorizer, so I didn't have anyone to contact immediately, you know. An authorizer is the individual at the DAV that looks at my stuff and makes sure I'm correct. I did have some errors in there, we corrected them for March, all better. But I, I just closed out January and February. I can't close out March because of the individual that I underpaid from them not giving me enough data or what have you. I can't close out March.
All right.
So, and then separately, I think Lori raised some concerns.
Yeah.
And so-
Or no.
So the issues I have, when Ellen started, I did send a packet. Because I knew Gary was leaving, I sent a packet with the AP voucher, payroll voucher, our warrant schedule, and the last expenditure report. And because Gary had officially left in December, he did the veterans' benefits in December, I sent the veterans' slips that he did for December as well to show that they were done. It had just basically a template of what would be required for me to pay benefits because I can only receive, or sure enough, looking at the warrants, I can only have a cover sheet with names, addresses, and dollar marks. I can get no backup because it's a violation. I can't put that information in a warrant. So you get a cover sheet and that is all. So I provided all of that. The veterans have been on the same schedule for the entire time I've been here. They get paid on the first warrant of every single month. So that's why I put that all in email and I sent that over in December. I sent the warrant schedule now three times, might have been four. The veterans were paid late in January, December, and March, I believe, on time. And then April was extremely late, we just paid them yesterday, two days ago, two days Thursday. When they don't get paid on time, I'm sure Ellen needs angry phone calls, but I get very angry phone calls.
Okay.
And I'm sure they're leaving angry phone calls in the treasurer's mailbox too. There are certain veterans I know, if they don't get paid on time, they call immediately, which I understand they're meaning for their benefits.
Yeah.
Which, when they don't get paid on time, not only do I get the angry phone calls, which I listen to, but now creates more work because now I have to pull all these checks out of the warrant, I have to arrange for pickup times. Then I have people calling on Tuesday, I had arranged for pickups Monday, and said, "If you could come sometime after one, I'll call you." Now they're calling me at one o'clock, "I need my check. You said it would be ready." I said, "Well, it's in the afternoon." Now I need it now. So people are not ready yet. So this all ends up falling back now on me because the checks were late. And in this case, very late. So we need to get consistent with the payments. It's been five months. I'm trying to give it time, but where I'm sending the same stuff over and over again, I'm just wondering if there's a lapse in communication. Like for the April, the original email was sent April ninth with the veterans' voucher and I responded within five minutes and said, "There's no attachment." I didn't receive word until Monday with a phone call from Ellen saying the veterans are saying they didn't get paid. I said, "I know they didn't get paid because I emailed you on the ninth and said, 'There's no attachment, I can't pay them.'" So I don't know, email's not getting checked enough. I'm constantly available. We need to get on a better schedule because everyone is relying on their benefits and I can't be the constant receiver.
He can't be buffering for that, is what you're saying.
Right. I mean, Gary and I granted, over five years, there was a hiccup or two, but it was five years.
Yeah.
So I, I'm okay with it, but it's been five months and we've already had two major hiccups.
So Ellen, are you at-
First of all, I was told from the Department of Veterans Services that I was not to pay till the last warrant of the month because of the situations like the individual that was paid here for three months and he had been dead for the three months, October, November, and December. So I was told I was not to pay, supposed to pay till the last warrant of the month.
Did we communicate that to the population though, to the service population?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
You did.
And again, she is right on the January thing. I did, I did not see that email.
We don't have an end of month warrant. We don't have an end of month warrant.
We don't have a start of month warrant either.
No, which is kind of however it falls.
Right.
It's basically two warrants, typically it's, it's two warrants a month.
Right.
So, so, okay, so you're saying that in March you sent out a formal communication or did you call the veterans? Or when did you tell them that it was going to move from the first warrant of the month to the end of month?
In, in January, when I was told that I could not pay till the last warrant of the month. And again, I was trying to figure out the last warrant because of how it goes with the schedule.
Okay, so you've got the warrant schedule. Did we send out, did we actually send it out in writing what the second warrant schedule is?
No, I haven't because I've been trying to get to know the program so that I can send them out. So I have, I had planned, and that's why I asked for it the other day, because I wanted to send out in, for June, I have to have more bank statements or what, more information. So in June is, is a transfer, a transfer month. So they get their social security in December, but we don't change it with the increase, so everybody gets an increase. We don't change that data until June. That gives the DAV time to adjust to the change, put the equation into the system, and the members to realize there's going to be a change. Then come June, we do a mini review, a mini recertify. We ask for either bank statements, changing your mortgage or your rent, if any rent changes. I don't have a copy of that. Oh, I might here. So we ask for those information again. So I didn't have anything to, to send out to the members, so I was creating my own. And it's a checklist, so what I was going to put out was the checklist. This is what I'm going to need. But I sat them down in January when I was in their home and said, "This is what I need to start with, this is what I'll need come June." I was going to send that out with the new schedule for fiscal year 25.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with the connection between which warrant we pay on and why I would notice that somebody was dead, but that's a whole other part.
Well, the confusion I'm having is this is, I guess would be my only town that would pay at the end of the month. I do six other towns and everyone else pays on the first warrant of every single month.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see the relationship between those two things.
No, I'm sorry, that's what I was told, that's what I was told from the-
Okay, that's what you were told, is there something in writing relative to what we're supposed to pay?
I can get it in writing for you.
Okay, that would be great, actually. That'd be, that'd be great because honestly, if it's, and it depends on whether you're our Veterans Agent or whether you're the state's Veterans Agent, maybe you're both, right?
No, so I, I work for you. My job is to be between you, the veteran, and the veterans, the DA, Department of Veterans Services. So my job is to make sure that the veteran has what they need, that you provide it for them, and that the DAV reimburses you for it.
Because it's, right, absolutely. And, and, and that's why, and I get it, and that's why, you know, I just want to make sure, like you said, we've got, you've got six towns, all the rest of them pay on the first warrant of the month. You're saying that there's a policy and you've been given direction it should be at the end of the month.
I was told by my authorizer, yes.
That may just be that individual trying to stagger their workload and unless we've coordinated that shift in timing, when you're talking people who are in a financial, and you know this, I mean, you're closer to the population than any of us are.
Correct.
So I'm sure I'm just preaching to the choir here.
Yes.
Okay? But I do want to reiterate, we're talking people that are running to the, to the knife's edge of stuff, right? And if you're on the knife's edge, that two-week shift, especially if it's a two-week shift without warning, could be catastrophic, right? So, and sometimes we only hear half of what we tell them, right? That's why Matt said, "Did we notify in writing that we were going to shift the date?" Stuff like that, because when I tell you something, you only hear 20% of it. When I give it, when you read it, you, you retain like another 40% of it.
Right, it means it's been the same veterans, I think, without change for the last five years.
So, so I just want to make sure that, that in this transition of time, we're communicating with people, we're being empathetic about how we're doing these shifts and, and we need to make certain that we, you know, to the best of our ability, you know, have them ready for that, right? And, and it sounds like you're doing a good job getting them ready for June, right? But I want to make sure we tell them three times because they only retain 20% of it, right? Okay? And I get it, but unfortunately, sometimes message sent isn't message received, right? I mean, you can have two people in a room and walk out with three opinions about what was said. And no doubts about that.
Correct.
Right? So I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing, we're taking the right approach, that, that everybody's getting appropriately communicated to. Are you good now? With, are all of our forms working? Is all of the paperwork that you need to exchange with the town actually working for you or not?
It's still not working. So I'm meeting with your IT team, I plan to meet with your IT team to see how we could make it work.
Okay, so Jacob, are you aware of that?
I'm sorry, I was-
Are you aware of the fact she's having a problem using our forms? Has she set up some time with you to get it straightened out?
No, I haven't, I sat with them.
Well, no, I was not aware, but absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, I can meet with her.
Is that?
I'm not understanding what the issue with our forms are, they just Excel forms.
What, what IT help do you need? What is the nature of the problem?
Honestly, I don't know because I'm working with the program there and then putting it onto the spreadsheets that she was, she had given me.
She had given, who's she?
Lori.
Lori, she's-
Excel workbooks.
Okay.
These are contractors.
They all change, I know your computer is not provided by the town of Brookfield. It's Westbrookfield, it's Chromebooks, it's not support Excel.
Yeah.
Oh, that would be-
Oh, that's the problem right there.
Right.
Do we have any extra laptops?
Um, we have a hot laptop that I could repurpose.
You have, you have a what?
I think I have a hot laptop that anybody could use.
A loner, you have a loner?
A loner, sorry.
A floater.
So again, this was a big part of the problem back in, when I took over, getting a laptop from either town. So Westbrookfield agreed to buy the laptop, I bought the printer, so on and so forth. I'm sorry I didn't recognize you, but he did come, he did come and help me. He tried to help me connect to the scanner, but I can't connect to your scanner because your scanner only accepts Brookfield emails, addresses, and that's Westbrookfield and so on and so forth. So took the easy way out, I took the forms, I had handwritten the forms just like Gary had done and sent them off.
Right.
So I didn't know Lori had an issue with my form, so.
Ellen, would you hold on a second?
I think it's mostly the timing. I know, we've got other towns where you've got to do it.
Jacob?
Yes.
My, in conversation with you outside of meeting, my understanding is that the town will be in a position to extend to her a Microsoft Office license at some, is that, does that have to wait for next fiscal year or is that something we can do sooner?
No, I can roll that out for you guys now.
Okay, my understanding is-
It'd be a Brookfield email address.
It would be a Brookfield email address, it would be access to the Microsoft Suite, which I think would simplify, well, she would have access to the web-based Microsoft Suite from the Chromebook. And that would simplify a lot of the challenge, or that should simplify the challenge she's facing and make it easier for her to then fill out the spreadsheet that then Lori needs to see and allow her to more easily integrate with Lori. So I think, so Jacob, can we-
Yes, I can do that, and it'll let her, like you said, she'll be able to use Excel because it'll be in the cloud.
Because it'll be in the cloud.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so, so Ellen, the, so what Jacob's going to do is he's going to set you up so that you will have access to Microsoft Excel via the Westbrookfield provided laptop. And that should, and so the, so now the expectation is that with that access, you should be able to easily fill out the forms and send them to Lori without difficulty.
Because then you don't need the scanner.
Yeah.
Or she does need to scan if her Brookfield email account will allow her to-
Will allow her to use the scanner and print it.
To use it. And so Ellen and Lori, and so please work together. If you have trouble getting this sorted out, please come to the board so that we, because this is important that we make it, it's like, we don't want, Lori, we don't want you having to, to deal with the, with the flack of things getting delayed and we, we love having you here and we don't want you to be upset. And, and, and we want, and we want, and we want our veterans to be paid on time and we, and we, and we want to equip Ellen to make sure she has the tools that she can serve the veterans without a lot of effort. And so-
And Lori, I apologize, you told me to give out your phone number, I never would have given it out.
It was perfectly fine, but then I had one veteran who called me continuously every 10 minutes wanting to know where his check was, which unfortunately, when I stopped answering my phone, that person started calling Karen. And I just said, "Sorry, sorry."
Good luck! All right. Do we have anything more?
I think we're good.
All right.
That's all.
Good, let's see, I would say, thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm, I'm, it's like, if nothing else, this conversation helped us realize that we need, that we can provide you tools that can help make things go smoother. All right. All right, so SunFusions HC, so hold on, let me cross that off. So that is agenda item number six that we have discussed. We'll now move back to agenda in order. Agenda item number one, SunFusions Host Community Agreement, Marijuana Cultivation, Discussing Modifications.
Okay.
Mr. Fromm and Mr. Kaiser Soze, or Giles.
Giles Soze.
I know.
Good evening.
That's terrible.
I just, I just can't get, when I realize that, I just go, now I can't forget it. But now I know your name.
Yeah, if you know my name, it works, right?
All right, so Beth, you have been lead on this.
I have been lead on this.
So, first of all, I apologize that we had to do the, uh, agricultural one twice, but in the, but we went too fast to go fast, instead of going slow to going fast. So, now that we've gone slow to go fast, we actually think have it right.
I'm busy.
Okay? So fundamentally, uh, there's a number of changes for the agricultural one.
Uh, Beth, I, just for the, uh, for the benefit of the audience at home, could you please, um, give us some context as to why we feel these, before going into the modifications? Why we're looking to make these modifications?
Okay, so, most of these are really fall into the category of clarification, okay? Uh, either clarification or taking out extraneous, um, I would say, there were some areas where we had overdefined things, and there were some areas where it underdefined things, and the hallmark of a good contract is that we get enough of the interpretation out of it that it serves its purpose, right? And make sure that everybody's clear on what the requirements are. Okay? So, there were some areas where I think red lines got crossed over, and it looked like we had what we had discussed, and actually, there was just, some of the language was a little, let's call it sloppy, okay?
Okay.
Um, and most of what is in here basically clarifies those kind of sloppy areas of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And puts us in a situation where we could then pretty much boilerplate those requirements into the manufacturing agreement and, and not run afoul of, uh, areas of, of potential, um, conflict or misinterpretation in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, um, do you want me to go through the, the specifics? Or, or how do you want to do this?
Uh, why don't you, why don't you just summa, can you summarize them?
I can summarize.
And then if we have questions, we can dig into them.
Okay. So, the first change is that initially, the agriculture agreement defined the facility as being outdoor, um, and the intent was that a good portion of the agriculture would actually be indoor. Um, so, in the edits, we went from strictly tier-six outdoor to a tier-seven or smaller-tier agricultural facility, period, regardless of whether it was indoor or outdoor. So that gives that flexibility and enables a certain amount of growth if, if they want to in the future, but it's still a, a relatively small area relative to the size of the property.
Is tier-seven the next size up from tier-six?
The next size up, it's basically ten thousand square feet per tier, is roughly what it comes out to be. So it went from being a forty to fifty to a fifty to sixty max area of cultivation.
Mm-hmm. So, from about an acre to a little more than, to like an acre and a quarter?
To like an acre and a quarter.
Okay.
Right, so, um, so, uh, in Section Seven, relative, uh, to like local permitting, it, it just, um, we just replaced the first sentence with, um, uh, an indication that, um, the company's going to comply with, uh, all the state and local laws, right? Um, but new regulations after February first wouldn't be considered a breach of this agreement. It doesn't mean that they don't have to abide by those regulations, it just means that they're, they wouldn't be violating their agreement with the select law.
Right, it's, it's like, if Kansas Control Commission comes up with a new regulation...
They abide by it.
Then they, then they, even, even if they're technically conformant with their HCA, if they're not abiding by the new regulation, it's like, they're going to have to deal with the Kansas Control Commission.
No, no, state, this has no purview over, this is written very explicitly.
Oh, okay. Bad example.
So, one of the problems is, the language originally had some phrases in there, within, within there that made it look like we were exempting them from state law, which we have no authority to do, right?
Yes.
So some of the language rearrangement was around taking out anything that implied that we had any purview over state law, okay? And, or, or really any purview over other boards' regulations, but we have purview over this agreement, so our agreement with them would necessarily be null and void, regardless of their status against...
They, they would still be subject to those regulations, just their HCA would not be voided by failing to comply with those regulations that were not in effect at the time that this HCA was agreed to.
Was entered into negotiation for, yes.
Um, if I, if I can just go back, just quickly, to the, um, the amendment regarding the tier size, there's another amendment, that I, I still want there to be confusion about what it means, uh, but it removes the word "outdoor," and simply leaves it as...
Yes, I did, I did specify that.
Oh, you did specify that? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, very good.
I know, I wandered around it, but I started with the outdoor and then back to the tier size.
Do you have a copy of the manufacturing?
Um, and then, uh...
Is that a manufacturing? I think so.
And then there's, there's some clarifying language under Section Eight of Community Concerns that just makes it clear that we have the option initially, just for the town, i.e. this board and the company, to resolve disputes over community concerns before it goes any farther, right? So it gives us that opportunity to just act like grownups, get in a room together and try to sort it out. Um, and then in the event that we can't resolve the complaints that way, we can open it up to the community in a public hearing, and following that public hearing, we can then, um, require bringing in an independent engineer to help them figure out how to mitigate those issues.
Mm-hmm. That seems like a good progression.
You know, it does. Um, and, uh, uh, and it's, uh, an engineer that, and it would be at their expense to, to bring in a third party if, if necessary, so... Um, and then additional obligations under odor control technology, right? It calls out, uh, against a very specific progression about how to resolve, um, complaints relative to, to odor. Um, and again, calls out the fact that we're not limiting any other board, but, um, again, it's not necessarily an explicit breach of this agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, let's see here, trying to see if there's anything else here. We've got effective dates, we just clarified, like, the dates, that this is basically a five-year agreement unless we, we terminate.
There's a...
Uh, and then there's some clarification in the indemnification, where the company will, uh, indemnify, uh, kind of defend and hold the town harmless from claims against us for functionally allowing what the state has said is legal for us to do, which is allow marijuana cultivation in our town. Um, and the rest of this, I think, is fundamentally the legal language that authorizes this to be part of an amendment, and says that the amendment would take precedence in any place where there's a conflict between the original agreement and the amendment. And I think that's pretty much it.
All right.
So, and like I said, most of that is just clarification of our original intent, but the language was a little fuzzy, so it's not clarified.
Yeah, and that's, and the intention is that we'll have that, um, language in the, in that, the newer language we reflect in the manufacturing.
And the manufacturing agreement, that's the next item on the agenda, reflects that pretty much in its entirety.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I know you all haven't had a lot of time to consume this, I don't know how you want to handle it tonight, but it's, it's fundamentally...
It's basically the same time.
It's basically the same agreement.
Mm-hmm. Hang on.
We'd like five minutes.
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so...
So, we can read it, now they're, going over their copy.
Yes.
Questions?
Dave?
Can you ask for five minutes?
Can I get my copy back?
Do you want to do a recess, or do you want to...
Do a copy of it.
No, no, I don't, I don't have a copy.
I should be the same in which section.
So what you're saying is, in the manufacturing, it's already got these edits in the contract.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the manufacturing contract reflects the proposed modifications to the cultivation.
Yeah, and Nicole has been through both of these, and, and is comfortable with the alignment.
Mm-hmm. And then where... I'm just trying to understand where, so for manufacturing, where are we different versus cultivation? I mean, there'll be some manufacturing...
Well, it, well, it's, the manufacturing-specific details are the description of the, um, of the manufacturing establishment. She had a four-thirty cancellation, and she sent me the clean version, so, up here? So...
So, did she just get it to us today?
Yeah, so the one that, let me make sure I forwarded the right one.
So just signal the ones I gave you, because they...
It might be the wrong ones, because that might be why they're talking.
Is that why you guys are...
I just gave you the new ones that she just sent me, I just put them in front of what I wanted.
I know, but she might have forwarded the right one.
Oh.
I'm just doubling...
I'm going to back up and say, I, I would like more time, I'm not comfortable, uh, discussing a contract that dropped in my lap at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so I'd like to at least deal with the amendment.
I, I'm comfortable dealing with the amendment. The, the amendment's small enough, I can digest that, in, in today's meeting. I'm, I'm, no worries there.
So, 'cause my, 'cause the email that I had forwarded was, uh, you know what, I may have sent the wrong one. So, 'cause I got a note that said at five-twelve, I got the contract that said that she had been through it, and that they'd settled the differences. Let me see here.
So this is the, it's the cultivation...
That's weird, when I open it.
With the amendments built into it.
Okay. This is the one from five-twelve. I may have actually sent you the wrong one, Karen. Okay, so just resend it, so I'm going to...
Beth may think she forwarded the wrong one for printing.
If you're having a question about the manufacturing, it might be because she sent the wrong one.
I'm looking at our clean copy of the one.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Do you have a different?
No, um, the copy that I received for my review may not be the one that was intended for discussion tonight.
So I think it was the three-fifty-four PM and not the five-twelve PM one.
Beth, Beth sent a, a, a wrong version to Karen for printing.
Oh, so she's going to pick the other one?
Is what we think happened.
Yeah.
This is what may have happened.
So, can I make a motion, though, that we go ahead and approve the amendment to the agricultural?
But the five, the, the five-twelve would be, just, I can just confirm, that was the one that Nicole had said, that she was sending the clean copies to the town.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think I forwarded the wrong one off the...
Yes, she forwarded one earlier than the...
Okay, okay.
Can you print?
Okay, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but Tom says he's not really willing to take it up, because he hasn't had time to review the town.
I mean, we've, we've got enough, enough other stuff on the agenda, and I'm just having it drop on my lap today, not ready.
What about you, Beth?
I'm ready, because it's the same thing.
Yeah, and I, if I can, just without...
It's like, if I could have, if I could have a little bit of time to look at and say, yep, I see the parallelism, but just without a chance to even take, take the first look at it, and I, I guess, since I'm running, since I'm running, I don't know how much...
I can still make a motion.
But actually, there is a, there is a motion to, for the, for the board to agree to the amendment, and so let's close that out first. Do I have a second to Beth's motion to agree to the amendment? Thank you. Is there any discussion on the, any further discussion on the amendment to the already-signed host community agreement for cultivation? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of the, uh, proposed modification to the cultivation host community agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we get that one closed off.
I mean, from, from my understanding, the only difference between the original cultivation one and this current, uh, when we get it, the current manufacturing one, is going to be, these, these amendments are now in this document. So functionally, it's the same thing, instead of saying cultivation, it's just saying manufacturing.
There's some, fundamentally, there's some, let me just pull up the one that I just forwarded to you.
There may be a few manufacturing-specific differences, or some cultivation-specific details may have come out, which is what I was expecting, it's just I wanted a chance to review it so that I could see that going in.
But this is already something that's been negotiated and discussed between Beth and them, along with Nicole.
Right, so, so, so this is, it has been vetted by Town Council, right? Um, and fundamentally, the primary differences between the documents when we consider the amendments is that it gives a description of, um, the manufacturing space. And it reiterates all of the standard information regarding the community impact fees, the obligations for notification, um, it, uh, goes through, indicates that, uh... You know, the company won't seek a nonprofit status for taxation purposes.
If I, if I could just draw your attention to the, the, I guess, the differences, the cultivation-specific or manufacturing-specific differences, um, in the cultivation HCA, there was mention of, um, a state regulatory requirement regarding, um, uh, energy usage by the lighting, and, and that was, uh, deleted as simply not applicable to manufacturing operation. Um, there was, um, most of the water use was left in, um, however, there was some specific language about, um, like drip irrigation.
Yeah, that's, that's...
That was, that was needed, right? Um, I, I don't think there were any other cultivation-specific language that, that was omitted or changed, but that, that was the gist of the, um, of the change.
Yeah, everything else is, is fundamentally the same.
Yes, yes, all the, and, and just to reiterate, the process that Nicole and I went through was, um, we incorporated the amendments in, in this amendment document into the, into the manufacturing HCA. We, we took the cultivation HCA, um, made these minor manufacturing-specific changes, and then incorporated these amendments that the board just approved into that HCA.
Yeah, in anticipation that the amendments, that the amendment would be agreeable to all parties, and therefore, the manufacturing HCA should reflect them from, from the beginning.
That's correct.
And that makes sense.
And we're not giving them the full authority to go open this up tomorrow, he still has to go to the CCC and go to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, and it calls out all of the waste and wastewater control requirements, which are pretty significant, actually.
Yeah, I would say for, for manufacturing, there's definitely, that's going to affect manufacturing more than cultivation.
Yeah, so, um, you'll see that under K, there's a very significant level of, of waste and wastewater controls, callouts mostly of state regulations, um... And then it has pretty much the same odor control, um, requirements that are under the, the agricultural, so... And one of the intents was, was to align those requirements very closely, because since they're going to be co-located, how do you delineate what's coming from the agricultural piece and what's coming from the manufacturing piece, if you somehow had different requirements in there?
And the residents don't care where it's coming from, they care that it's coming.
Correct.
If, or, or if it were to come, it would not matter to them which part of, which operation it's coming from, they would care that it's coming.
Correct. So, um, you know, I, I don't, I really don't see an issue with taking it up, given that we're, we were, we went into depth on the agricultural agreement. So, and, and this is one that Nicole's not, like, she's, she was able to rectify the, the differences that were between the, the four o'clock version and the five o'clock version in that hour, um, so I'm, I'm not concerned that she did a line-by-line, and it would do that for us, so...
And I'm kind of at the point where I'm going to take Nicole's word for it.
I know, I mean, I, it's like Nicole's, Nicole's word has a lot of weight with me, and it's just, I'm the guy that reads privacy policy.
You must not have very many, you must, you must not have many apps on your phone.
No, I just know what I'm getting into. I, I just know, it's like, dear Lord, though, at lea, at least I don't, at least the insurance companies are not getting my driving habits.
No, my insurance companies will never get my driving habits.
So don't sign up for OnStar.
Nope. No, that's why I have the thirteen-year-old car.
Yeah, I mean, Nicole's saying that.
Yeah.
We're able to get this after all, it touches the clean drive.
Yep. Yep, so, um, so I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve the five-eleven PM draft of the, uh, manufacturing HCA.
Second.
Right. There's discussion going on in my head, so I'm pausing.
There's a discussion going on in your head.
I don't know how much mortal, I mean, I'm not going to look at it anymore.
I know, I know, it's just, it's just the, it's the, you've heard of belt and suspenders?
I don't think I'm going to fix Nicole with something.
It's just, I just, I just liked, I like to see it, and I like to touch it, and review it, so...
That's why you delegate stuff to people.
I know. Delegate but verify.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
And I did screw up the first one, so you're right to be cautious.
Mm-hmm. You got it fixed.
I did get it fixed.
But I guess, eh, we got it fixed, because we had this one coming around.
True.
Next, next one, I don't know that, well, retail would be the next one.
Retail would be the next one.
The Moneyball.
Hopefully that'll, hopefully that'll be jettisoned by them.
All right, I don't, I don't have any more discussion, so...
You can always abstain or say no. You can always say it or say no.
I was just gonna say that.
No, that's it. I know, alright. All in favor, we have a motion, we have a second, so all in favor of agreeing to sign the commu-, the manufacturing host community agreement as reviewed by the lawyers and as attested to by Beth and Brad. Sorry, that's editing, I'll take, strike those from the record, please. I'm editorializing. For all in favor of, of the board signing the host community agreement for manufacturing as presented and represented to the, to the board, please say aye.
Aye.
No. I, I, I have to be true to myself, Mr. Prom. If I had more time to review.
To that own self, be true. Alright, two'll do it.
Thank you.
Do we have a clean copy to sign?
Um, we, I think we can get a clean copy to sign the reports all over, we'll do it after the meeting.
The last one I got from you was six away, can you send me the other one? I did, why didn't get it?
Let's see, hold on, I, yes, alright, so ladies and, alright, moving on to agenda item number, Karen, you'll be able to get us a copy of that for signing today?
I have to wait till it comes.
Okay, so, agenda item number three, request to use the banquet hall.
I don't know, maybe this computer's slow.
Sun Fusion requests to use the banquet hall on June twelfth from six to seven PM for a public hearing involving the, their cannabis business in town. So, and as, this is a, this is effectively a reschedule of your prior request?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we already said yes to a different date, and he's asking for another Wednesday.
Monday.
It's a Monday?
Twelve is a Wednesday.
I thought it was a Wednesday.
You're right.
It is a Wednesday, because town hall's open to eight o'clock on Wednesday, and that made, and that, and that made everything go, oh, that's easier.
It's easier.
And that's why you stuck with a Wednesday, I trust.
I took whatever date Karen threw out and said yes.
Yeah, I think, okay, so.
I think we told her to give you a Wednesday, so.
Cool, yeah, is it, so, so is there a discussion or a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the banquet hall from six to seven PM on June twelfth for a public hearing.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of public, of use of the hall as moved, please say aye.
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 There we go. I know what this one is, alright, and let's see, since we have advisory here, and we do have out of order on the table, I would like to move to number seven and meet with the advi-, and begin our meeting with advisory. We can come back to four and five later.
We don't need a motion.
We've already, we've already, we've already voted to move out of, go out of order.
Great.
So, Jeff? I apologize for the delay, but if you would care to get yourself into session as needed. Alright, good.
For the seats to clear, and we'll move over.
Alright, we will transition. Sorry about that. Alright, so, so, so go ahead, Jeff.
So, we had as of, I guess it was May second, the, the levy, the maximum whatever was fifteen, five, fourteen, oh, thirty-eight, nineteen. And I think that was what you'd given us, Laurie, as far as the, the limit?
I give you ten, five, forty.
I'm sorry, ten, five, four, four, nine, one, eight?
Yep.
Okay, I, I read the wrong line here. That's April twenty-fifth is what we, that was the number we're working off of.
Okay, that's, 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 I don't have that number explicitly written down anywhere, but that jives with what I have in front of me.
Is this the one?
It is FY twenty-five budget worksheets one.
Is that what you had?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I have, yeah.
I don't have anything further than that. If there's been some adjustments, then I need to be up, or we need to be updated, excuse me.
We are, we are discussing the operating, the fire department operating budget with Chief Martel tonight, and we are discussing some warrant articles with Highway tonight, so, so stick around. It's like, it's like, if, if, and so if there's nothing else that you wanna talk about, we can move on to the other guests, but at least.
I, I wanted to, you hadn't, let me finish what I was trying to say.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to confirm that all of you are working off of the same maximum number of levy limit, the ten, five, four, four, nine, one, eight, or has there been an updated number since the twenty-fifth of April?
There has been no, speaking for myself, who has, who's wound up being the keeper of the spreadsheet, there have been no changes to the numbers that affect the maximum levy amount. And the maximum levy amount plus local receipts plus state aid gives us the maximum, the maximum possible budget, so.
So we're like thirty grand under?
No, we're about two grand under. Which one are you looking at?
So it looks like total budget's ten, five, eleven?
Uh, column K, please, of FY, FY budget, not FY budget two. You should be on the FY twenty-five budget tab, not the FY twenty-five two.
Okay. They're all on the side thing now, I'm just trying to.
And column K is the slideboard recommended budget. And I'm sorry, ten, five, eleven is the advisory recommended. They are, their recommendation comes in about thirty thousand below ours. So we, there is some divergence, they had a lower COLA, and a couple of other places, I think they had a slight.
And our number is ten, five, four, three, and you're saying max levy's ten, five, four, four?
Yes, which, which jives with my feel for the numbers.
Okay, so, to give you our update, we just have a new budget number for ourselves, which is recommended ten, five, one, three, nine, nine, oh, point six, oh. And we adjusted upwards by two thousand, the Board of Health agent, from the one dollar that you had originally, and so that's the number we came up with.
So for Board of Health agent, what is your total now?
Two thousand.
Okay.
For the agent, yeah, we said two thousand.
Okay, the, I, the select board has recommended, is recommending three thousand for that, so we're, so we're a little divergent, but that's okay.
Right.
But I just wanna make sure that you know that we're not in alignment there.
No, no, I mean, there's several places, but I think we more or less know where they are.
Okay, and.
And I'm not concerned with that.
One second. Sarah, would you please, after this meeting, would you please send me your updated recommended numbers so I can incorporate it? Because I'm not gonna try and keep up. I wanna focus, I wanna focus on the conversation, not scratchy.
Yeah, I'll send you the updated.
Okay. Second point is that the, whatever you sent on, on Monday for our column, the numbers do not coincide with what we have in our column, so.
Then, then that's, that's an error on my part.
We've gotta scrub it somehow.
Okay, I will, I will take updated numbers from Sarah, and then I will, and then after this meeting, I will share updated numbers that include any changes that we agreed to on our column, and I will roll in any numbers from Sarah based on what you send us after you close your meeting.
Right, I mean, that.
And then, and we'll, we'll fix that error.
I do have one question regarding the total amount to be raised number, or, or whatever.
The maximum budget number?
Yeah, that, yeah. So, when we did the police station, we did a debt exclusion.
It's factored in.
Okay, and, and we, okay, that's what I was gonna ask. I just wanted to make sure that when we refinance into the longer term note.
When you refinance, you clumped all of your loans together, so I pulled out.
So you do ratio, you ratio out the amount?
That is just solely for the police station interest and principal, and the rest of it just.
I, I just wanted to make certain that that was, that debt didn't get lost in the shuffle.
So that we have as forty, my printage is really small, forty-five, seven, seventy-six for next year.
Okay, and so that, that portion of it is fundamentally?
It's in there, yes. But one thing to keep in mind for you guys' budget, because you said you're at ten, five, four, three, the state, state aid numbers are not finalized yet, so my ten, five, four, four is the current, includes the current state numbers, so you wanna make sure you give yourselves like twenty grand of wiggle room?
I, I believe when I went for the state numbers, there was the, there's the house and the governor's numbers that had been published, and I took the set of numbers that was less advantageous to us.
The numbers that are in the ten, five, four, four are the house base means, which are actually slightly lower than the governor's, which are what's in the numbers I have right now. The Senate could go in and work it.
Yeah, but I, of the two numbers, I decided to create, base our projections on the more conservative assumption. That way, surprises on the upside are much easier to deal with.
Yes.
Okay, but I, I, but I will take the guidance that we may wanna put a little more headroom in there.
I'd say about twenty grand, that's what the, the first two changed, about twenty, so I give yourselves like twenty of wiggle room.
Okay, um, thank you, that's good to know.
Okay, second point, we just approved our last meeting's minutes, where we voted all of the warrant articles as we had them in the first round, so the numbering might be off. But I believe we were in agreement with all of your recommendations, we still didn't have the total numbers, but the ones that we did not recommend were the two, the tractor thing and the whatever the resale. Yeah, and those I told you guys before, there was probably gonna be three, two again, so that's where it turned out, and then we did recommend the gas monitoring system, three, two. Everything else is.
So you recommended against the purchase of the new backhoe and against the trade-in of the existing one? Okay.
And then, again, I don't know if the article numbers are the same in your new warrant.
They're not the same.
But I wanted to give this to Karen, so at least she'd have some, a working, so we, we'll make sure we get our recommendations into the warrant book this year. And I asked her also for us to be able to review it before it goes to publication, so that we know. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I would like that, since we totally dropped off last year, we didn't have any recommendations.
Karen?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, I told him, we'll definitely will have, yes.
So, there's one issue we had, label the gas buddy system, where the problems equal.
Yeah.
Fifteen AA, and that's what's approved as fifteen A, which is not sixteen. Was that, there's, there's three other more articles on it that weren't on the origin, that we haven't voted on yet.
Right, so we would like to run.
So, again, all the numbers that we have from fifteen A down are not the articles as the warrant we saw this afternoon. So, either we've gotta revote on the new warrant articles, or Karen can get it.
I did send, yes, and I did, they're not the same as the ones I sent you.
The one we got this afternoon?
Yeah.
That's, that's the legs one.
Yes, yes.
And that showed that our fifteen A, because it was, had been deleted in the April sixteenth version of the warrant.
Yeah, yeah.
And now it's our the sixteen, in this, in the first one. And then I was, she got new thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, which weren't in the April sixteenth.
So I'd like to turn this over to Karen, and then as far as if you decide to vote any warrant articles tonight, we would like to vote, the ones we haven't already voted on, we'd like to vote those also, and sort of go along in sequence with you. So, are there any questions, or?
The other question we had was on articles, the original articles thirty-three and thirty-four, so the files from the April sixteenth.
Oh, the numbers?
Thirty-three and thirty-four were the.
Hold on one second, Karen?
Yep.
Just for future reference, the, the zero, zero numbers were always intended to be immutable, and new articles should be added to the end of the document until we do the final renumbering.
Oh, okay.
That, that way, we, the numbers, when we talk about an article, it always has the same number, and then we close, when we close discussion, it, then the numbers, there's one final renumbering, and there's only one time where the numbers change.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Okay, so if anything else gets added, please add it to the end, we'll reorder it as needed later.
I prefer not to revote on all the warrant articles if we don't have to.
Yep, I understand. Yeah, and, and those, those new warrant articles were us making changes in the budget and taking some project work out of the operating budget and putting them into free cash.
Well, there's actually three different articles we had questioned about, one was on the original article eighteen, which is for to raise appropriate transfer warrants on hazardous treaties. And the reason we want, we just had to have that conversation, because it was asking fifty-five thousand, and I think, I think we heard from you, Tom, at the meeting, that even though that account hasn't been fully spent, that was fully, it was all just pending bills, if you will.
Well, no, it wasn't that it was pending bills, that he had, that we still had plenty of cutting season left at the end of the year.
Yeah.
That, 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 there was work in the pipeline that would utilize the money, but it had not, it had not, it had not been built. So, that's, I, I apologize if I wasn't clear on that.
Okay, well, no, yeah, if it's in the works, that, it tells me it's just in the works, and it's just, so, again, the concern from committee was that it looked like you had a bunch of money still in that account, and we're getting fifty-five grand more, but it sounds like from this conversation, all that money's been spent properly.
I think that, that was more just a communication error. Two, two of our members did not, two of our members did not believe what we were told.
I would not commit to the warrant, to the, that, the existing money in the warrant article being fully spent down by the end of the year. I expect we'll get a good chunk of it spent down. Okay.
Yeah.
So the other two that we had, just to move this along.
Yeah.
The old thirty-three and thirty-four, which were about transferring the balance of a couple of different funds from the three hundred fiftieth committee, whatever it's called, back to, this didn't say where it was gonna go back to, I think that was the question.
Okay, current, current article thirty-seven.
Yeah, it's thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Yeah, and that's.
No, thirty-seven.
And so, our, our discussion was that we had allocated, uh, let's see.
Thirty-five thousand.
No, 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 that's, what I'm saying is, we allocate, of the sixteen thousand dollars remaining in the account, we were looking to do, hold on, I gotta call up, there's warrant articles. And it's a transfer.
Yeah, but so the warrant said if you had to close the article, not use it again.
Yeah, we were going to, okay, that, we were, that, for paying, that we were going to use some of the money left over from the three hundred fiftieth celebration in that warrant article account, and we're gonna allocate it to pay for warrant article number three prior year bills. Otherwise, that's typically done with free cash, so that way, that reduce, so.
So it's not getting into your free cash.
Yeah, and that, that leaves free cash available for else, it's like, and, and the intention was, because if we just, if we don't do something with the money, the purpose of the, as I understand, the purpose of the account has been met, so any leftover money will be swept and go into next year's free cash, and we're just trying to say, well, don't go to free cash, we'll, we'll use it now.
It just, thirty-seven, I'm just saying.
Hold on, hold on, you have to repurpose it for a new article, not to pay prior year bills.
No, 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 well, we.
It's an article with a, a new special purpose.
Yeah, yeah, we, we would, we would, we would transfer it to fund warrant article number three, which is for.
You're not, you can't transfer an article like a balance, you're either calling the article something new, like, it's no longer gonna be the three hundred and fiftieth, it's going to be, you know, it's going into the road improvement account, it's going into something else.
He's talking about.
Uh, no, I get what you're saying, you can't just say, I'm going to use the money left in this article to now pay prior year bills, you can't do that.
Okay, so we, what we, what do we, we have to, do we have to re, do we have?
You have to give it a new special home.
Okay, so we have to.
Or let it go to free cash.
So, effectively, we can let all the money go to free cash, or we can redesignate a new purpose for the existing, for the remaining money as a new warrant article?
Yep, or you can put it all in stabilization, I mean, you can transfer it all there too, you can do. Yes, but you can't start divvying it up into, I'm gonna pay this article and some of this article, it just has to all go to one home.
Let's go to a single purpose.
Is the simplest way just to go back to stabilization?
Well, well, it didn't come from stabilization, it came from free cash in a prior year, and so.
Yeah, it was a prior year free cash.
If you put it into free cash, if you vote for it to go into free cash, it goes into next year's free cash.
You wouldn't actually vote for it, you'd just remove those all together.
It would be simpler just to not do anything, and it would automatically release into free cash.
Well, what we could do, though, it, since it came from free cash previously, right, to, to fund an article, and how much is left?
It's about sixteen, I think it's sixteen, sixteen a year.
Could we do two articles relative to the elevator, one that is from the three hundred fiftieth, and one that's the balance?
Well, I.
The elevator's different.
There is a.
You have another one in there for the elevator, for the balance of the chairlift.
Well, what we could do is.
So then you lower that article down.
No, because the, the, effectively, that's, that's repurposing the chairlift.
You're taking on a chairlift article.
That needs to be, from what Laurie said, that article has to, that would, has to take the existing chairlift account and repurpose it to the elevator.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that.
Could we merge, could, Laurie, could we merge two end-of-life articles into a single new article in the purpose?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kinda what I, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, so instead of having seventy-two for the elevator, now you have like eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you have a lot.
I thought we were putting extra free cash on top of what we had from the.
There's no article for that.
I think you were intending to, that there was no other free cash article for the elevator.
The art, the article for that never got into the document, and that was one of the things I called out when I sent, when I sent the updated document out earlier this week. I said, there is no article for that purpose in there. I went, because I went through and I said, and I looked at every article on the free cash tracking sheet, and I went through every article in the warrant book, and I lined them up, and I split them into, these are the free cash articles, these are the transfer articles, here's the article for the backhoe.
Yeah, there's currently just a single article for the elevator.
And so we can, so we can, we can correct that, or not correct that, we can change that and put that article in, if we need, if we feel we need to.
Did we, is there? I guess my question would be, so how much did you save, was there?
Sixteen to sixteen.
A little over sixteen thousand.
So if you wanted to do that towards the elevator, you could really just rewrite it to be the same way that article thirty-two is written.
Well, I'm wondering if the sixteen, if we could just change the new computer acquisition to be sixteen-two, because that's a rough number estimate anyway.
Oh, for the, for the website?
Yeah, I think.
And just cover that, just cover, instead of having it be fifteen, have it be sixteen-two, whatever the balance is of that account.
Yeah, I think.
Transfer it to technology, and that'll take that burden off of this year's free cash.
Yeah, new computer repair, uh, computer repair replace account? Yeah, new computer repair, uh, computer repair replace account?
Well, we have it on the warrant article as a new computer acquisition and migrate town website to a new service provider. So what that would do is give us the-
Just call it technology upgrades?
Yeah, just call it-
Makes it a little easier?
Yeah, just call it technology upgrades and, and that way, since everything always costs more than you expect it to, that gives us just a little bit of buffer for competition to just add.
There's actually three separate articles, I think, five, five, and five.
Yeah, Karen, our discussion was it was going to be one article.
It has, it has to be one.
We have to use it to fund one article.
What, what number is that, Beth, I'm sorry?
Uh, so, Jeff, the, to answer your question, uh, the board's intention was that articles, what you see as articles oh-oh thirty-four, oh-oh thirty-five, and oh-oh thirty-six would be a single fifteen thousand dollar article for technology purposes. This was, this, these three separate articles was not what the board discussed last week, and so this is a, this is a clerical error.
Okay, so-
And so, and so we're, we're going to, and we'll address that, and then, once we address that, then you can follow on and decide how you want to, what recommendation you want to make against a single article.
Are you going to do it tonight or some-
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I, I would like-
We'll wait for your calling.
I would like, I would like to get it done tonight, because I'd like to close this out.
Yes, yes, okay.
Yeah.
So-
Close this out before the election.
Those were the only other ones, and then the, the only other question we had as a committee was, there were some other articles that appeared at the back end of the, uh, whatever was sent out today. Uh, and I believe it was a citizen petition, uh, or a warrant on the, on the longevity factor.
Yeah.
Was that citizen or was that something that you decided to put in or not?
Citizen petition.
Citizen petition.
If it's, if it's in the back, it's a citizen petition.
Yeah, and it talks, and, and it definitely changes our competition from last time, Beth, where it says, that statement will be paid at the end of, because you have for all periods. Doesn't say it's at the option select board.
Correct.
It says it will be paid, which means now everyone will get one of these every year, which is, if that's what everyone wants, that's fine, but that's what this says.
Yeah, I, I think it's incumbent on us to help people understand what that does to the budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it doesn't specify a funding source, but it's gonna, and that would have to be the operating budget.
Right, so, so my-
Yeah, so it would definitely have to be the operating budget based on our expert guidance.
Yeah.
So my, my question is, normally, the advisory committee does not vote on citizen petitions. Um, is there any flexibility, because on this one, we definitely want to vote, but I don't know if it's possible.
I would say the advisory committee is charged with, um, advising on, on financial articles. And typically, the citizen petitions are not overtly financial, and so the advisory committee, in, when I was on advisory committee, we didn't always get into them.
Right.
Um, I would say that, um, given the na, the impact of this on, given that it is a fairly explicit budgetary one, I would have no problem with the advisory committee making, taking a vote on it. Um, and does anyone else on, does anyone on the select board have a different opinion?
Yeah.
No, alright, I, because I don't, I, okay, because if the board has a different will, then I don't want to just have, be the one to speak first.
So-
Now, Lori, yes.
Can I ask a question about article thirty-three, I guess the fire alarm system for eighty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Um, is the fire alarm system a lot of money? Because you guys funded the fire alarm system via ARPA funds a while ago, and you haven't spent that money.
That was money for?
A fire alarm system for seventy thousand dollars, you approved at the August twenty-fourth meeting, was an ARPA allocation.
Okay.
I thought that was the design or something like that.
No, I, I, there was, there was a contract we had to sign for the design, and that was, I think, fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars?
Eighteen thousand for the design for the police station.
Okay, maybe I'm picking you up.
Yeah, that was for the insulation.
But I believe, but I believe the fire alarm system has been designed.
We've, we've made a penny for it, yeah.
Okay, that has, that has been designed. But if we're asking, okay, then it seems to me that, maybe this is where the, the ARPA fund is, um, has gone, so.
So that may have been, so who asked you to get the fire alarm system on the warrant?
I believe Kelly put that on.
Hey, chief? Has anybody been in communication with you about fire alarm system for the town hall?
These three.
It was probably Kelly who was working it.
She was working it, yeah.
And she lost track of, she lost track of the fact that we have the ARPA money.
Probably, so.
So I'm wondering if you guys didn't know you had that money already allocated, or if you had-
No, we didn't know that we had that money allocated.
That money-
I thought that, we, we had so much confusion over allocation and reallocation of ARPA funds. Do we have, you, you have a spreadsheet laid out, can I get a copy?
Yeah, I want a copy too.
Make it three.
And I think at some point you sent it to us, but I just want to-
Well, this one I updated yesterday, so that-
So, well, there you go, I like that.
I know, I know there's been updates.
Oh, goodness.
Alright, so, one change is that the, um, article three is going to switch to being funded by free cash and not by a transfer from another article.
Right, but that'll free us up a bunch of free cash to pay for that.
Yes.
Because if anything, if-
Thank you.
If Kelly was thinking it's going to be eighty and not seventy, and we don't have quotes yet on the, on the fire system, would it be advisable to leave it on there for another ten grand, just so that in case the ARPA money is not enough? Or do we have some buffer in our ARPA money if it was?
You've got fourteen, fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-seven left in our book that's unallocated.
But one, but I was also-
You have to allocate everything by December thirty-first of this year, even if it's two years to spend it.
Yes, one thing I remember is-
Now, if we allocate it, but then have to reallocate it to something, where does that leave?
Out of luck.
And these articles, the ones that this is the most recent one or not?
Allocate it and spend it by December thirty-first, because once you allocate it- By December thirty-first, I have reports where you've allocated it.
So, December, and December thirty-first allocations freeze?
Yeah, and just get, just get it over with.
My, my understanding is the, um, what advice that I remember getting was that we should have some money in reserve for the police station roof, for the insulation more specifically. And so, we can, what it may, so it may make sense to put some free cash aside against that, against the, against the possible more expenditures. And we have that in reserve, and that will free up the, the additional, um, ARPA money for, for use sooner. Because what I'm trying to do is like, I'm, I'm taking Lori's advice to allocate and spend the ARPA money sooner. And, and, and longer term, set aside free cash, and so spend the ARPA money soon, free cash longer term, so that the ARPA money is, um, not encumbered at the end of the calendar year.
So what you could do is just leave the fire alarm alone on the warrant for the eighty, and un, rescind your vote for the seventy thousand that you allocated towards the fire alarm and ARPA. And that frees it up for the police station, because you only have to allocate that based on a vote of the select board, and then you have that money available for the police station.
Yeah, actually that would-
Because it's only on there for eighteen thousand, which is the, the Dario contact.
Right.
Uh, town hall ballroom renovation.
Mm-hmm.
So there was a hundred thousand allocated, but only fifty-seven thousand?
Has been spent so far.
Fifty-seven thousand's been spent, so there's still forty-two thousand for the town hall that's available.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and the work on that room has been done.
I didn't know where the project stood, so I didn't know if that is clear or complete, or if you have more phases of that.
The only thing, I, I believe it was complete, the only thing I knew about was something that, and I don't even know where it stands now, was the hallway going up.
Top of the stairs?
Right.
It's supposed to be painting at the top of the stairs, so realistically, you could, once you confirm the painting and we pay for that, then you'll be able to rescind the rest of that allocation, because you still have forty-two thousand remaining there.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, I would, my opinion was, I was going to wait till the new TA came in to let him take lead and charge on that.
Well, just so you know, um, we did receive an estimate to, to repaint the hallway. I sent it on to the, um, town hall improvement to Al and asked him if he was aware of that, and he, he said, thank you, and he didn't say anything else, so I assume they are looking at it too, but we did get an estimate.
And we can always reallocate any of that, right?
Any of it.
So, okay, so I-
Until December thirty-first, you can keep-
So whenever we decide with the website, if we end up not having enough money there for some odd reason, we could always reallocate. And so seventy for the fi, oh, we haven't used any of the seventy for the-
No.
And we're scratching the mass works and the cul-de-sac project?
You already did, so you rescinded those already. I just looked up stuff on it, so you can see what you did allocate and what you rescinded.
Gotcha.
Yeah, um, Lori, what happens if, uh, as, using hypothetical numbers, um, what happens if we allocated eighty thousand dollars for the police station project? Um, and the project doesn't finish until after the end of the year, and the project comes in at seventy thousand dollars, so there's ten thousand dollars unallocated.
We're out of luck.
We, we lose the money.
You're typically considered to be out of luck, but you do have another two years to spend more if you're just calling it the police station project.
Okay.
If there's more stuff-
Depending on how you define it.
Exactly, because you're, you're the ones allocating the money.
Yeah, so fundamentally, the ARPA money should be stuff that is going to be expended sooner, so that, and the free cash can be stuff later. Uh, conversely, ARPA money is under the control of the select board, whereas free cash, um, is a town, is town, is a town meeting matters.
From what they've explained to us so far is, you're supposed to allocate by December thirty-first, but we're not going to actually have to report your allocations until next April thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
So they're giving us like four months of wiggle room in between when you're supposed to allocate finally, and when we're actually going to report your fire allocations.
And when they're going to hold us to it.
So is our actual balance for one thirty?
Of what you have remaining?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one thirty is-
Okay.
Yeah.
Is what's un-
Uncommitted is the fourteen eight, and unexpended is the one thirty.
Yeah, so-
Well, actually, it'd be one thirty plus the fourteen.
One thirty plus the fourteen, yes.
Yeah, so it's one forty-four, one forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, but that was-
I thought we literally only had fourteen thousand left of ARPA, and I was like, where did that go?
Alright, so, we have police station roof, or, sorry, we police station ins, police station insulation, town hall fire alarm.
Yeah.
Need to get done, and Green Street. Those things need to be funded. My understanding of Green Street is that it was a, uh, the contract, the, the bids came in above contract, above grant.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
It, it was, fifty-four thousand was the contingency that was never in the grant.
Mm-hmm.
And we were on the floor the whole time.
Mm-hmm.
And we never budgeted for it.
Okay.
And Dennis brought up a good point, like, how did that happen?
How'd the contract get signed?
Because it was, because it was on the town meeting warrant last year, when we were supposed to allocate the funds, and for whatever reason, we passed over it.
Oh.
But it was always considered a contingency of the grant.
We, we signed it because, we signed the contract because it was on the warrant, and then we took it off the warrant. We'll sort your room. That's, um, that's, I, that's bad, that's bad, that's bad on us, we, but let's make, let's get it fixed.
But like I said for that one, I, I would, I would highly suggest putting it into the road improvement account.
Mm-hmm, I like that idea.
Because if we can use chapter ninety funds, uh, if at all possible, then we can reallocate that to a different road.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of it just being Green Street.
We're not committed to Green Street.
Yeah.
Yes, so I, I co-sign that idea, I like that flexibility. I mean, we're gonna have, it's like, we're probably going to have to spend that money.
We're going to spend it on a road regardless.
Yeah, but I mean, and if we don't, the chapter ninety money goes to Green Street or goes to somewhere else.
Right, it all gets spent.
Yeah, and it all needs to get done.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so-
So it's going to be merged now without-
You're looking at us, you're, you're looking at a conversation like it's-
Well, no, I'm just looking, thinking through, I was talking to Jeff, that all the warrants are going to re, rejigged now, no matter what we do, right? You've taken two warrants and made one, right?
Well, the, 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 the num, the numbering will change again.
Yes, but the numbers are, the dollars are the same.
They could change also.
Or at least the, the, well, I, I hope not, but we're having that discussion here with you present.
The only place the dollars change are early, the new three, five thousand or fifteen grand.
Yeah.
That's the only new thing I saw.
Yes, I, I mean, my, this is just, my stream of consciousness thought is if, we, we know what we, we voted, and if the numbers are, are on, we'll set up to blanket re-vote saying we agree with whatever, you know.
Five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I don't want to go back and re-vote forty-seven different articles after we've already voted most of them.
Well, I would say, if, if the number changes, your vote for the substance of the article transfers over. I don't, I don't think it-
Yeah, 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 the article, as long as the dollars don't change, the article, it shouldn't go to the-
I mean, I, I know, just fundamental philosophy, I think, um, the advisory committee, for whatever reason, is, is against the, the backhoe thing and is for everything else. And that's, that's more or less, no matter what happens to the numbers or the numbering of the warrant articles, so.
I mean, just to be clear, the, the backhoe thing is simply that, you know, some of us think more homework should have been done around the numbers and, you know, why have that? It's really not that.
So they're not questioning that.
And I know this guy, I know that guy, you can do cheaper, and I can't fix it, blah, 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 blah.
Ah.
That's, that's all that was, so.
Yeah, it's like, it's like they think it's maybe twenty thousand high, and the key is for us, when we put a warrant article on there, is to make sure that we don't have to go back.
Mm-hmm.
I was making sure I wasn't missing something.
That's, that's why we have the democracy.
Alright, so-
We had seven members or nine members, it could be five, four, the other way, who knows?
Yeah.
So, so for Green Street, okay, looks like that was already changed, where twenty was-
That's merged into fifteen.
Article fifteen and-
Yeah, that's what Lori suggested.
Okay, so, what I will do, yeah, what I would like is, um, that to me is kind of easy and clean to approve. So I will take a motion to, uh, to approve the, um, transfer of the fifty-four thousand dollars from the Green Street article, um, and make in it to increase the amount sent over to road reconstruction.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um, remove the article previously numbered twenty, uh, with the fifty-four thousand dollars for Green Street, and apply that fifty-four thousand dollars to article fifteen, uh, road reconstruction, road construction and reconstruction cap. For a total of seventy-nine, a recommended amount of seventy-nine thousand dollars to be the motion for that, uh, article.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor of that change, please say aye.
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 If you give us a couple minutes, we'll, we'll vote that.
Yep.
Motion, motion, uh, approve article, the new article fifteen, the seven.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Alright, now that leaves us, okay, so, so the Green Street funding's taken care of. We have, in free cash, we have town hall fire alarm, and we have engineering for police station. So, do we want to put some free cash to those?
Engineering for-
We have in, in, uh, we have eighteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars for the engineering of the police station installation. We do not have, we have not allocated any money for funding the actual work. But we've paid the engineer to spec it out and to run the bid process. And so we have, so we have all that.
So do we want a free-
So, but going ahead, we're going to, we're going to need to, it's like, if we want to do the project in this coming year, we're going to have to put some money on the table for it. And that could be free cash, or that could be a rejigging, uh, that could be allocating, um, unexpended ARPA money. Because we do have a hundred thirty thousand dollars that is unex, well-
It's allocated but unexpended. Do you still have double fire alarm money?
Uh, yes, uh, we have, we have seventy thousand allocated to fire alarm, and then we've got forty-two, and we got, we had about forty-two thousand on, allocated to the, to the ballroom renovation. That's really-
You have to hit the hallway first, so you still have to spend a little bit of forty-two.
Yeah, so I would say maybe thirty-five thousand, it's like, I'll budget, I'll, I'll pencil in thirty-five thousand.
It wasn't, it, it was short, under ten grand, I want to say, to hit the hallway.
I, I, I want to say the bid was small.
Right.
Yeah, so thirty-five and the, the almost fifteen remaining, so we've got about fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money that should be allocable. Fourteen thousand is clean, the remaining thirty-five thousand dollars is likely clean.
And then you can either take the seventy from that fire alarm money, or take the eighty out of the warrant.
Right.
You can dunk one of those fire alarm, articles, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'm inclined to move the police station into ARPA money and do town hall on, and do the, do the fire alarm on free cash, but I'm not married to that position.
Yeah, I'm not married either.
Do we have true estimates on the, on the installation?
I do not believe we do.
No, we don't.
Which article is this, I'm sorry?
Um, this is, we are not talking about an article, we are talking about a- Um, this is, we are not talking about an article, we are talking about a no need and we're talking, we're identifying how we're, how we think we use the township on it.
They were gonna-
And there may be, there may be an article.
Wasn't there an article up before?
Um, on what?
On the police station?
No, we have police station engineering on the ARPA money and then we also have, and then we have town hall fire system, we had seventy thou- The town hall fire system, we had allocated seventy thousand dollars of ARPA money and then somehow it wound up on the warrant as an eighty thousand dollar.
Yeah, eighty thousand more, and the old article thirty-two, that's what, and, but it's not in the new article.
Yeah. It, it is, actually.
Oh, is it? Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's article thirty-three, actually, and so what we're trying to figure out is do we leave it on the article as article thirty-three under the new draft? Or do we leave it on the ARPA money? And we're thinking because we don't have a, another good source and we really need to do the fires, or the police station insulation sooner rather than later, but we don't have a set number yet because the engineering that's going on right now is what's gonna get us the accurate-
Thing to go out to bits by.
To, to go out to bid with, so, um, rather than put something that's half-baked in front of town meeting for the police station, or for the police station insulation, it, it would make more sense to, to do the town hall fire alarms that we have, at least a pretty decent line of sight of what the cost is gonna be and leave that ARPA money free to go do the insulation.
Yeah, oh, yeah, to, to, oh, because we had, we had approved that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
The fire alarm.
Yeah, so I think if we leave it, if we leave it in place, we're, we're better off, leave, leave it on the warrant.
Okay.
Leave it on the warrant so we can revoke the ARPA money.
Okay, should we, should we revoke the ARPA money now?
No, it's not on our agenda.
Good point, alright.
We can talk about it in the context of we're doing the financial planning about the funding sources for the purposes of the warrant.
Yes.
But we can only actually make that decision at a future date.
It has to, that decision has to be on the agenda, good, good point, thank you for, uh, thank you for keeping us safe, on the safe and narrow.
I, I will try.
Alright, so, PD insulation will be ARPA and town hall fire alarm will be-
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting past eight fifteen with regrets.
Second.
Alright, all, all in favor of extending the meeting past eight fifteen, please say aye.
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 Aye, alright, so, that means that the, okay, so, the, so, current article number thirty-three is staying on the warrant. So now that brings us, so, I'd like to turn our attention to thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six. And I would like a, uh, I don't know, I think we can get away without a vote and just re, reaffirm our, our desire for this to have been one warrant article.
Yeah, I don't know how, how did this get split out in the first?
It was me, I did it, because when I talked to Jacob and you, it sounded like it was three separate things, so.
No, we had that conversation very explicitly during the meeting, that this, that we needed to aggregate it so that if the cost on one thing happened to go over a little or under a little, that it was all one technology budget. So I think what we're gonna be doing is-
Technology upgrades.
Is to do, raise appropriate transfer borrow some money for, for technology upgrades, right, or take any action there too, so thirty-four through thirty-six get consolidated to one.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and the motion will be to, was it a transfer from the, or reallocation?
You're just gonna, you're gonna dump thirty-four through thirty-six, you're gonna get rid of all those and now thirty-seven is just gonna say-
Ah, there we go, to reallocate it to, to, to technology upgrades, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that piece of it, I forgot that we had that other article, so we're just gonna reallocate that amount, the technology upgrades, and it's gonna be in the right neighborhood here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there, that way we have one landing place for previously allocated.
So there's sixteen grand in there now for technology upgrades.
Right, which is a little more than we needed, but that's kinda-
Well, we don't have sixteen.
Well, no, no, it's a little more than we, well, it's a little more than we thought we needed, but it provides a good home for that money and, 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 we will, and we will eventually, we will eventually use that money.
Right.
It's a good home for that money. And if we don't spend it on a street.
If we need to, if, if it's not enough for technology upgrades, we can always go to ARPA and get the rest from ARPA.
No, I don't think so, I don't think we can do technology upgrades on ARPA, but what, but what it does, what is-
You can do anything for it.
Okay, really, pretty much.
Any governmental response, we can claim revenue.
Right, any, right, anything.
Anything, you can pay payroll if you really want, it's, you can literally do anything.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, did you catch what we, what we discussed?
We've all said yes, whatever you guys did, we've all said yes.
You just want to, uh, take the money left over with three fiftieth into technology.
Yep.
Right, and, uh, what are, and current articles thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six are going away because the repurposing of thirty-seven achieves the same result.
Yeah.
Alright, good, wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Yes, yeah, so thirty-seven will become thirty-four and all those other ones.
And all the other ones, yes, correct.
Yes.
Could we have anticipated start date for accounting work there?
Um, if, so, um, it's on the agenda, so we can talk about it as a sidebar, is that, uh, he could pretty much start, he, like, I was trying to target a fifteenth of May start date, so when we talk about the contract, unless it's like, I, I'd like to try to, when we have that conversation, just get dispensation.
Only because I've been holding up on the website stuff, thinking he's gonna come in, 'cause I don't wanna start and then transition, I'd rather work with him.
Yeah. Yeah, so he, he's willing to start like the fifteenth, but I just, we just need to get, I basically, I basically need your permission to just hammer out the details on the contract.
Okay.
We need to-
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so, um, with, okay, and, for the, uh, for the, um, and I apologize, uh, for, to observe form, could someone open the warrant?
There's one more thing on the warrant.
But can I get a vote to open the warrant, because we closed the warrant last week?
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to open the warrant.
Second.
Alright, thank you, all in favor of opening the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, and, and now, all those changes retroactively are, are brought into now that the warrant has been opened, so let me, just, just gotta make sure it's in the forms, I'm sorry, Tim, thank you for letting me take care of that.
No, no, no worries, no worries, I, I just wanted to have, have that conversation about the new article four nine about the longevity.
Uh, sure.
Just to make sure we're all, where we found the word from last town meeting versus where.
Does the art, well, does the, the article, well, the article doesn't state a funding source, but according to, uh, Lori, the wording indicates it will have to be operating budget, so fundamentally, we're gonna have to understand, um, Lori, if the operating budget, I'm gonna come up with, I'm gonna put some example numbers. Say we're ten, ten thousand dollars below the maximum, uh, where our levy limit would allow us to be, our maximum levy, excuse me, and the cost of this article is twenty thousand dollars and the town of-
You can't, you can't find it.
So effectively, the levy limit will prevent the funding of this, okay, that, and, and that's fine, I just wanna understand, what would happen, does those two things conflict and I wanna know what controls?
Yeah, so a citizen's petition is supposed to be brought forth with funding, so we had a long discussion about this, when the town administrator first came up with a citizen's petition five years ago.
Mm-hmm.
The person presenting the citizen's petition is supposed to present a funding source with their article when they make their motion, um, and they can't force the town to vote for something without a funding source.
So was the petition ago?
What was that?
Sounds like the petition is, is, then, invalid.
They, we have to accept any citizen's petition, whether or not they present a funding source, they can present a funding source on the floor, um, but it has to be validated.
And, and the, and this has a subordinate claim on the te- the fund, the funding versus everything else because of the way it is, it's, it sounds like?
So best practice says that longevity and it being a payroll should be coming out of the operating budget.
Yes.
It is not governed by national law that it has to be out of your operating budget, they could attempt to say that it should be coming out of stabilization because we have the funds, it's foolish.
No, they get, uh, any-
The town in a rural position, um, because any type of payroll or expense that is, would be considered a yearly expense like this one is positioned to be, should be coming strictly out of your operating budget, out of the tax levy.
Yes, because in, last year, we, I believe we funded the, uh, the bonus, the longevity bonus out of free cash because it was optional.
Yes.
And, but now, but because this article makes it mandatory, that basically says that it really ought to be funded from the operating budget, you do not pay recurring mandatory expenses from free cash.
Not pass those, not collect two hundred dollars.
So just to follow on Tom's question, Lori, um, so if indeed, as you said, you know, this art, article now exceeds the levy limit, um, it sounds like either stabilization or you'd have to have an override for it, right?
No.
How else would you?
No, you can, a citizen's petition can't force an override, um, for two reasons, first, an override would have to be presented to the town in the form of an article prior, it can't just be said in a motion. Um, and, I mean, they could attempt to vote out of stabilization, but it would have to be presented to the town.
Yeah, and, and that's politically difficult, um, and then, and to, and it can't be paid out of stabilization without an explicit vote to authorize the release of money from stabilization, which is a two-thirds vote.
And they could, they could, they could roll the dice and do it as raisin appropriate, but then it wouldn't necessarily be anything you could finalize until we got the state numbers in from, from, uh, uh, the cherry sheets and if they didn't, there wasn't enough money, then it would get cut, correct?
And, and the ab, and it would be an absolute shit show if the, they, let's say it costs thirty thousand dollars and there's twenty thousand dollars worth of headroom, how does the twenty thousand dollars get carved up and spread among the people?
Well, it doesn't, it would, we'd have to cut the whole article, it would be the last one voted, it would, the article would have to be unfunded.
Okay, it couldn't, it, it, it wouldn't be partially funded, it's like, okay, oh, that, I like that, nice and clean, thank you.
So, so my, my next question, follow-on is, who has the list of what this would accumulate for an annual expense, does, do you have that or Kelly have that or?
At town meeting, I keep a list running of everything we're funding from free cash, everything we're funding from raisin appropriate, to make sure that nothing-
But we need to, we need to get, we need to get the treasurer.
Excuse me, you know the longevity, the people, because we had that same problem on the floor last year, is that we didn't know what the number was.
So as a citizen's petition, they're required to bring that with them, if they can't provide the data, then we don't have an actual number to vote on and we're not required to bring anything, which is the reason that we didn't have that. Last year, we had the data for what we were voting on and when the motion was made to expand it to other departments that we were not originally voting on, that's why it was voted incorrectly. So if as a citizen's petition, they're required to bring all of the backup, so if they don't reach out to someone but me or the treasurer prior and get the data, then we can't vote a number because they don't have a number.
Lori, and when you say we can't bring a number, is that a, um, is that based on mass general law?
I don't find out for you, if there's no number, you're not voting on anything, you're voting on an article, it's great, we know that.
Yeah, that, I, I understand there has to be a total, it's just, if, 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 if lack of a total makes the article on its face invalid, that's, it, it's just, understanding that is, is important. Okay. It's, it's, Jeff, it's not our article.
I, I, I'm speechless because I don't wanna be, excuse me for saying this publicly, I don't wanna be on the podium again being a bobo because I don't know what the friggin' numbers are. So we, we need as either the advisory committee, accountant, treasurer, select people, what the number is, so that we have a-
No, no, it is, it is, it is incumbent on the presenter of the article to bring this to the meeting, I am not doing their homework, I refuse to do their homework.
So on the me, on the, on the floor, when it's brought up and being talked about, if they can't provide the number, then it would strike me as an invalid article because we can't vote, because we don't know the number, so we can't even have a vote.
Right, we don't know that they're providing enough funds to cover all the employees that they say their article is for.
Didn't you vote on this last year?
No, but it was a one-off.
It was a one-off.
Well, there was a-
It was a one-time bonus and this, this is making it policy that it shall be.
Oh, this is gonna make it policy.
And fundamentally, right, like, last year, we had a lot of discussion because of the-
Come along, say point, whatever, you had promised the world and then you screwed it.
Thank you for holding in, Peter.
End of our time.
Well, yeah, so, so we had, we had, we had linked, we had linked it, yeah, go ahead.
So we voted it last year, but it never was implemented.
It's not allowed to, we don't pay longevity till the end of the fiscal year, ever, that, that is, that's a thing.
This, this, we voted last year before the end of fiscal year.
But it was-
Voted at fiscal year twenty-fourth town meeting.
Yeah, so, so it'll get paid, it, it'll get paid on the last, the last paycheck and job.
It's coming.
Yes.
Well, like, we had one person get it already because he had left employment.
I have not paid a single person longevity.
Not at the end, yeah.
No, I'm pretty sure he can't.
No, I, I just had a conversation with him about it yesterday, no, he said no, he hasn't, he said he won't, he won't get it till June, even though he retired yet.
Oh, he hasn't gotten it?
Not one person.
Oh, I thought, oh, okay.
We, we just, we just said, we just said-
And if you're not, if you're not employed at the, at the end of the year, you don't get it.
If you're not here on June thirtieth, you don't get longevity.
But we, but I think we made a special vote to give it to him.
No.
No.
We didn't?
No.
That was not a special vote.
But he's gonna give it to you.
No, he's not, if you are not an employee of the town on June thirtieth, you are not getting a longevity bonus.
Somebody answered that question in the opposite manner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I thought if you were, I thought if you retired.
No, you are an employee of the town on June thirtieth.
No, that's stipend, so, so stipends, so let's, let's say, for instance, I was the one up for election and, and people kicked me to the curb on, on May sixth, right, for whatever our, our election is, right? I would still get my stipend, or, or, at, in June.
In June.
For what I wore, but that's different than longevity, that's, that's very different than longevity, because that's my actual compensation.
It is very different. Longevity, you have to make it through this fiscal year.
Yeah.
The whole year.
But I thought this board made a promise.
You can't make promises like that.
I know, but I, I'm not sure if it's-
Lori, you can't make that promise.
I, I remember, I remember be, I remember the discussion being that that, it would happen.
Was it a meeting that I missed?
I don't remember.
I don't remember, you're at most of the meetings, I don't keep detailed track of.
Yeah, I mean, I've missed a couple, I don't remember that conversation, I usually remember money conversations.
No, I remember we had a specific meeting about this.
So here's the other issue, I can't pay someone who is not an employee here anymore, you can't do that, it's not the way it works, you retire, you're off of our payroll, you're now collecting retirement, you can't, you can't just-
We're not going to solve that particular part of it here, so, it's, 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 so, out of the weeds.
Yeah.
Now, actually, you did thirty-four through thirty-seven, you also have fifteen thousand in free cash now to reallocate, 'cause you had free cash marked next to those articles.
Yes, so that was, um, that was, yeah, that was in the, uh, in the discussion and so that's, that comes off the board.
Yeah.
Uh, so, Tim, you're the-
No, no, I think we, uh, killed that one dead.
Okay.
Sorry.
You can use my gavel, heated horn. For the audience at home, uh, someone made the comment that this discussion's going to get longevity pretty soon, and I thought it was damn funny.
They already tuned out.
Yeah, they're, they're all gone, there, there's nobody there.
Alright, so, is, is there anything, is there, is there, is there any other discussion on the warrant?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Lori?
You, the BACO articles, you made them very, very specific.
Um, okay.
So we don't-
You have, you have made a model and everything.
Yeah, that's, good call, yeah.
I really suggest just going with BACO, um, just in case when you go to buy it, you can't get yourself a John Deere model three-ten.
See, it's added or similar and the lawyer added that in.
Yeah, so don't put John Deere.
I, I just wish, I wouldn't put the name or the model number in.
Uh, um, I will take that advice and, uh, I will propose that we modify the text to say for purchase of a new BACO to replace existing equipment and then in the descriptive text, um, intended, uh, purchase of a John Deere model three-twenty or similar. We just move the model description to the descriptive text, the same way we have the number.
I love that, thank you.
I didn't catch that one, so thank you.
I will take a motion.
I like a motion to make that a justice.
Okay, uh, alright, so.
The training article has the same description.
Yeah, yeah, so I make a motion that for the BACO articles, we remove the reference to the specific model and, and, uh, type and just reference it as a BACO, uh, of similar type, uh, for the purchase and a, the BACO currently in possession of the, the highway department for the training.
I just wanna touch on the BACO topic right back to that.
Uh, what, oh, Lindsay, one second, uh, it's like, I wanna get the wording change done, uh, so, all in favor of the wording changes proposed for the two BACO articles, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Lindsay, please go ahead, no, no worries, I, I didn't, I didn't wanna forget the vote.
And you did bring up a good point, so the quote that you, that was received for the John Deere BACO, which was presented to all of you, the numbers, that did not come from a state vendor, we intend on purchasing through state contract, which essentially would likely drop the price of BACO, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's gonna go down twenty thousand, but it will likely be less, it's always better to assume more, as you guys know. Um, that particular invoice came from our, our common, common vendor that we use that's local to us, they're actually not on the state contract through, um, the OSD website, so just, just throwing that point out there. Obviously, we would, we would call there, uh, of fifteen, um, valid heavy equipment, uh, vendors, seven- seven of them carry this particular brand of backhoe. So there are seven people that we could reach out to to get the best number.
Yes, yes, all looking for our business.
Yes.
Yeah, you look for something slightly different too.
Okay.
Just whatever you need, don't buy any German, because it always breaks. It's not, it always breaks, no, it, they, it's over-engineered. Because I had a bunch, I had a bunch of, I had a bunch of equipment that, that was, that was, uh, when I was with the Army, like Corps of Engineers, that was like, that was actually from a German vendor and it was.
Doesn't Farvukh Nugin say it's kind of what last year?
No, and, and Farvukh Nugin is, it's fun when it works.
It's fun when it works.
I drove a Volkswagen for years, it was very fun to drive.
I had a Volkswagen, I swear it had a problem every month. I would think, everything, something broke every time. It's not my trophy.
Is there anything else in here that you think we should be aware of?
I think, I think that was in my last note.
Okay, excellent. Because I'm not even going to try and close the discussion until I make sure you have nothing more. I've been shot down too many times. All right, so, uh, does anyone else at the, at, in, in our joint meeting have any concerns or questions here on the article, on, on anything else? Because if not, I'd like to try and put it to bed.
I don't know. Why is there a delay? Is this for a discussion after?
Well, I, I believe we, Lindsay's here about the, whether there would be need for it, and also to talk about the, um, the, 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 whether the need for the pumps. Oh, I, I put that in there just because, do we, do we, that was, that was. I don't know if we need Lindsay for that. It's like, it touches on highway, but it's like, that, it means more of select board policy. We've never sent any money on that, or we've never spent any money on that? Do we need to put in more money?
Uh, they actually spent their money. Um, I had a question on article twenty-eight. They just spent the gravel road money.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
A week ago.
Because I just signed it on the warrant.
Yes, just spent it. Article twenty-eight, uh, marijuana.
Yes.
It says three percent in the article, but why are they, it doesn't say one point five percent?
It says not greater than three percent.
Not to exceed three percent, but we're actually gonna, uh, make the motion to be one point five.
Oh, interesting.
What was the reason for the one percent?
I don't have any talent, you can just go three.
The intention, uh, the, the declared intention was that by, uh, doing a slightly low tax rate, we, uh, may attract more businesses here and make, make it up on volume.
Because, because they've got some, we were, we're so surrounded by people that have retail establishments. Figured it, figured we would just reed the pot a little bit.
I don't have anyone that didn't just go three.
Yeah, everybody in the state of Massachusetts is at three percent.
They are?
Yep. Uh, and, and by not putting a number in there, like, we can have the discussion, if people want to go three, then they can make that change on the floor. So we phrase the article in such a way, it's up to the town to decide, but we at least make a case for, do we go one-five, or do we go two, or do we go three?
So, so Lori? Lori, are you telling me we just spent money on the, uh, warrant article account, um, for gravel for private roads?
Yes.
We just, literally just.
I just signed the thing for bar.
Okay, okay, that's, 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 that's fine, but my understanding is that the deployment of the gravel requires a vote of the select board. So it sounds like highways bought the gravel, so now it's ready to go?
We just bought it.
Yeah, so highway bought it, so it's ready to go. It's like, we still haven't, we still haven't approved any uses for it.
Yeah, but, right, but, but this would, but that would, this would be the typical season for it, right? Because it's post-winter, you, you've got potholes and such to fill, so that next year, when you're, when you're doing private word plowing, you're not.
Okay, I, it's, it's not, it's not that much money.
So, it is, and.
Now it's going to use all of it. On the first part.
Well, that and Dr, and that and Draper going up to the water tower, water.
Yeah, that one definitely. There are several. So the, the problem with Chestnut, which I think we should sit down on later time and discuss because they don't necessarily qualify and fit all the stipulations required.
Yeah, I thought I heard that.
To go forward to the first level and to approve us to come out and do repairs. Um, you have to have three or more dwellings, which is one of the boxes that have to be checked. And we actually just got the, the butter solicit today from Al, and it looks like there are technically only two on Chestnut Street. Um, the other one's technically on Forest, so it's a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit of like, uh, to be decided, I guess, by you guys on, on what's determined. Um, because it is a terrible road. It definitely needs some attention from everybody who's ever been in by it, who knows that. But we can't touch it until, you know, it gets to the point where the board says, okay, yes, you guys can go out and deploy some material, whatever, yeah.
Someone asks and we authorize it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it this year. It's like, if it's, if nothing's, if, but, it'll come up again as we haven't done it, if we haven't approved any of this work now.
Yep.
That's like, that's fine.
There was one article on the old warrant that did show up on the new warrant, and was it the same thing with the three-fifty, or it was something about?
Nineteen hundred and twenty-six dollars worth of a figure of longevity or whatever?
Oh, we removed that.
You just removed the.
We took it all, we took it off, and that's why the agenda for tonight.
Renamed it, Karen.
Well, that's all.
So, we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, because it's a, it's, it's not a warrant article account, so it's not something, this, this renaming doesn't have to go to town meeting.
Okay, got it.
And so, and, and, and basically, we, we think we found a good use for it, and so we don't need, feel the need to send it there. Okay.
Yeah.
So that came up, all right, so, excuse me, if that's done, and all these changes, um, let's get this thing closed so we can send it to the lawyer.
Make a motion to close the warrant.
Okay.
All right, um, you guys good? Before I close the, before we vote to close the warrant, do you have anything else?
I think we are. I don't think we, I think we voted on everything that's listed. If we missed something, we missed it.
Well, it's more, it's, it's, it's more, if, if you need to approve something, that's fine, but once, once I close it and send it to the.
That, that's fine. I mean, if we show up as we, we just didn't vote it because it wasn't, or whatever, that's fine too.
You can vote on it after I close it. Lori?
Before you close it, are you going to do something with that fifteen thousand in free cash, or are you just gonna let it simmer?
Uh, let's see.
Oh, why do you have fifteen?
No, no, well.
Well, we do.
Well, it's, it's fifteen thousand that we were allocating, and so, well, let's do this. All, let, let's just not close the warrant and discuss it, because I, I'd like to get the vote off, I don't want to forget this vote. So all in favor of closing the warrant, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
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 All right, so let's, okay, back discussion.
So is the thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, the original computer stuff?
Right, so that fifteen is still sitting there, so, so do we, do we let it ride, or do we reallocate it? Whether it's to stabilization, whether it's to OPEB, whether it's to something.
Yep.
Yeah, I just.
We can't, we can, we can either let it ride, we don't have a, I don't think we have a transfer money to stabilization article. We could add just a transfer to stabilization article and, and just, even though it's a token sum, you know.
As a place.
Because we're way behind in that.
Then it's the pension. I would, I, I would be.
In OPEB.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would recommend doing.
I mean, I would say, we can either put it in regular stabilization, we can put it in capital stabilization, because otherwise, we would, because if we had money, we wouldn't be transferring from, or actually, what do we do? We're doing free cash, we're transferring free cash to the roof stabilization.
Yep.
So we already, so we already have uses for free cash. No, we're doing, we're, no, we're not doing free cash to roof stabilization, we're doing capital stabilization to roof stabilization. That's what we're doing in that account.
We are, yeah.
So I would say, if we're going to do this, I would backfill, I want to backfill capital stabilization or do the roof stabilization.
Yeah, but we do need to pay that out.
I mean, how bad, I know.
It's going to be there forever. There are two towns in the entire state that are funded.
Are we?
None of those.
Are we making, are we making progress? Are we making progress?
Your, your liability is seven point seven, and.
Seven point seven million?
Yes.
We have a hundred.
We have like a hundred thousand.
How, but how fa, is, is, is our, is our liability going faster than the money we're putting in?
Yes.
Yes.
By law.
You can thank everyone at the school for that, because we, that's the problem with our town is, you just look at other small towns and their liability is like three hundred thousand, because they're not, they're fully regional.
Yeah, they don't have their elementary school.
It's because we have our liabilities mixed with the elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a ton of employees and our, every year, our liability just gets bigger and bigger. We're not even keeping up with it.
So this is terrible to say, but you just hope they pass away and not collect on it, theoretically. It's actuarial.
Spoken by a man, like a man in the insurance industry.
Geez, Brad.
Their spouses are, their spouses are adopted too, and I worry that's to get rid of all of them by the end.
No, please. I know you want the rates to stay the same.
Well, but, so, but here's, but here's the thing, the, the weird thing though, and here's, here's the, here's the only saving grace, right? Is that, the, the thing is, is that for generations, we've funded retirement from our operating budget, right? So, so like, we have this, we have this huge liability, which is like, all the money that we'll ever get collected.
Number. It's a big number.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's real, but it's, it's real, but it's not.
To account that people are going to live forever.
Everyone's going to live to ninety-five.
Live forever and.
Statistically, it's not going to happen.
No, I mean, and that's why they update it every year to see, okay, who, who adds knocked off.
Right.
You know, if people have got divorced and now aren't responsible anymore, and have we lost employees?
Right.
Everything, so it, it updates every year to see, but for some reason, ours just, it goes up every year.
Yeah.
I would personally put it into capital, and I would not leave it on the table, especially when you have potential funding at the end.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You don't want to leave open money.
Yeah, so, so, I, 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 I would, I, yeah, I, I like that recommendation. And, and it, and since we didn't put numbers in the warrant articles, I would just recommend that we change the recommendation. So you're thinking the, into the, into the, um, capital stabilization?
Because you're moving, um, stuff for roofs, so I would just put it to capital.
Can you, can you do, you can do a two-part motion for that, right? You can do both the movement of the, you can do, fund it both from free cash and do the, the transfer in, in one sweep.
For the roof or for capital?
For capital.
Um, as long as they're both going into the same place, then yes.
Okay, so like, if we looked at, so in article forty-two, we could get a motion drafted. Oh, no, because that's a transfer, and if the transfer from stabilization requires a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, and you're putting in, so you only need a majority vote, so you need a fresh article.
Yeah, so we would need an additional article.
Yep.
To, so we could do, we could do a transfer of sixty thousand dollars and then do fifteen thousand dollars as a free cash into roof stabilization, and still get us the seventy-five.
So you're, you're recommending sixty thousand based on a sixty-four, uh, almost sixty-five thousand dollars in unallocated free cash? That's the number I have.
I, I don't know, I, I don't, I, I don't have the spreadsheet up, or I had the spreadsheet up and it closed on me, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, my thought would be, if we have sixty-five thousand dollars of free cash, I would say, do that and then we have to make a decision, do we just short fund the roof this year by ten grand? Or do we do the tra, you know, we could always go get that ten thousand out of general stabilization.
Or capital stabilization.
Right.
It's like, yeah, I, it's like, I'm, I'm fine with just changing the roof stabilization to sixty thousand from free cash and leaving capital, and not touching capital stabilization. That makes it a one majority vote.
Yep.
And it makes it very straightforward.
Yeah, and it, it might be a little short, but we can always go get it later.
But when we need it, when we need to out, pull it out, we'll just pull a little more out of ca, capital stabilization instead of roof stabilization. The, the money's there for us.
Yep.
It's like, all right, all right, so.
That would be my recommendation, is that we would, so, and so that article would actually go from a transfer article to a.
A free cash, it would become a majority vote.
Actually, we just need to, we need to, why is it that they even had a source on this again? Or it was just to allocate the fact that it needed a two-thirds vote?
No, because, because we were using a stabilization account as a source, we had to specify the source.
No, you didn't.
Oh, okay.
This article always, I, I'm sorry.
I know, you're, you're right.
I'm glad you're agreeing.
You're right, you're, you're right. We did, it's like, I, maybe just because we knew, we said, we know it's definitely coming from here. But we should definitely generalize the source, and.
Yeah, so, and, and I would actually say that's probably a change that needs to happen in forty-one as well. Transfer a sum of money to the OPEB fund liability and just, and then have the motion be from free cash. And then forty-two chain, vote to transfer a sum of money, uh, to roof stabilization. And then again, identify the source in the motion.
All right, so, um, so I'll take motion to, um, modify the language in, in current forty-one and current forty-two to, um, make the source of funding nonspecific and the amount, and to, uh, keep the amount nonspecific.
Yes, that's the motion.
Sorry. All in favor, uh, any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then, we also need to modify in current forty-two, the amount from seventy-five to sixty, as discussed. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, uh, of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So sixty K, and that means we expect there will not be a two-thirds vote required because it does no longer involves a, a stabilization source.
It's a simple majority.
It becomes a majority vote. Okay.
And we don't have a bunch of loose money floating around.
Yes, all right. Anything else? All right, then I, then I think the plan is we close the warrant, uh, we put a final set of numbers on these articles and it goes off to the lawyer, for real this time.
For real this time.
All right.
So, motion to close the warrant?
Second.
All in favor of closing the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So Karen, that's for Monday.
Monday is, uh.
Oh, Monday's closed.
But are you working from?
Or you're, you're taking comp time, aren't you?
I gotta, I, yeah, I have to use some comp.
Yeah, okay, then, then this is for Tuesday.
Is that the rule?
Yeah, this will.
What do you mean the rule?
Like, people.
Um, I believe people.
Can work from home.
Uh, people who are capable of working from home may work from home. Um, Karen has comp time, so I think she's just going to use her comp time, which I think is appropriate.
I have a lot of comp time. In fact, I tried to use it the other day, take an extra lunch, and then I ended up staying late, so it didn't do any good, but, yeah, I'll use it.
All right.
I can do this Tuesday and then send it to Michelle. I want you, everyone wants to look at it anyway. I'll send you a draft.
All right, so, for the, uh, all right, so, that gets us that. Um, we've talked about a little highway. Do we, um, do we need any more convincing on the back, oh, Lindsay, on the backhoe?
Yes.
Um, I know that, uh, from, from the discussion, when, uh, when Gary was here, when, when, at the department head meeting last week, when I was talking to Gary, he said that the, it's not the bushings so much, it's the hydraulics and the electronics.
Correct.
And the, and the rest of them from the previous fire or fires.
Yes.
It's like, is there any way we could get a, a third-party eval of that?
Certainly.
Because I thi, I think there's a, it's like, I think there are some people in town, they say, we just need to maintain the bushings, and it'll, it'll last forever. And it's like, and I don't know these things.
Right. We can certainly get a, a cost evaluation for the repairs that are required outside of the repair that we've already done.
Right.
Um, which included rebuilding and custom fabricating the cab from all the rock spots that it had last year before it was repaired.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, but certainly, yes, we can get that.
Because I think that, because, uh, understanding the numbers behind the justification, or the, the numbers that are driving this to say a new one is better than putting more money into this one.
Right.
It's like, and, and at the very least, in the interest of transparency and helping, and helping people in town understand why we think this is a good decision.
Right.
I don't know that we'll convince everyone.
Yeah.
But at least this way, it's like, some people say, oh, it's, it's, a lot of people just say, why aren't they just doing the bushings? It should be fine, it'll last forever. It's like, it sounds like it's not just.
Just go to the, uh, Lindsay, we talked about it briefly, um, is that while it's being repaired, you've got to rent an allocation.
Right.
One of those, uh, opportunity costs are. So what are those opportunity costs are?
Right.
Right, if it's sidelined for two months, well, you got, and you gotta work, you gotta rent something for two months.
That, that's a good point. Does, in, in, that should be included in the analysis.
Okay, sure.
Is that, it like, if it's good, like, two months repairs, we're gonna need, there're gonna be ten or fifteen days where we're gonna need to rent something cause we're just gonna need it and ours is in the shop. It's like, I will trust you to come up with the right numbers on that, cause I don't.
Yeah, absolutely, um, yeah, most certainly. Um, United Construction, which is a John Deere dealer, is who we deal with generally, so I feel like they would be able to some fair assessment on what a true, like, you know, repair cost would be.
Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, and then, but, uh, I know that for the, um, pumps, the pump replacement, it's like, the, the observation is.
So. Fuel software, fuel software. Cause we're not just replacing the pumps, I think that's.
Okay, a fu- a fuel dis- a fuel dispensing system.
Yes.
Okay. But, but it's like, I, I, the, the observation's been made that it's like, basically, this is, we spend this much, about this much on gasoline in a year.
Okay, so.
So it's a big, it's a big chunk of money.
That has come up as well, but remember, this is, th- those are two separate, separate items. So the, the reason why this fuel software replacement upgrade is so important and, and I'm actually glad Peter is here because he knows, right now, we have very functional but old pumps, okay? Which are fine. The tanks, they're old but functional, they're fine. The problem lies within the software, the computer that we have is so old. Quite honestly, it's, the computer, there's a designated computer, if you've ever been in my office, it's behind my real computer and it can never, ever be turned off, because if it ever were to turn off, it would, it would do updates and the updates would not allow the old dinosaur software that we have to be compatible. It would just be, so we'd, we'd be wasting money on something. So the current software is over seventy-five years old, it's, it's one of the original versions of Gasboy. It is essentially completely useless to us because we don't have any way to print it, we don't have any way to pull reports from it. We are basically unable to track fuel and gasoline usage. And why that's important is because we right now have a clipboard, pen and paper, you don't always remember, in the middle of a snowstorm or whatever, whether you're fueling, what, how much you put in, what you were driving, whatever. So it, the importance of it is that there are so many people, so many departments that use this, fire, police, uh, obviously highway, um, the cemetery, et cetera, um, it's important. And this, this upgrade would give us the ability to, um, every piece of equipment, every vehicle would have their own FOB associated with it. So we would know what time, how many gallons, what the mileage was on the car, the cruiser, the ambulance, the backup, whatever. Um, and it would bring it into technology where it's, it's based up, it's cloud-based software. So basically, it's just protected by a login, a password, and everything is digitalized and you can, you know, retrieve the data instantaneously from your phone, from basically any device that you can access the website. So it brings our twenty-seven-year-old software that's basically useless, I really don't even use it. I, I rely more on our deliveries and track it through my Excel spreadsheet, which is also pretty historic. Um, and it brings us up in, to this century and gives us a true way to track fuel.
Now, will the, if, if the Fuel Boy computer were to fail.
Yes.
We'd still be able to pump, right?
You can, you can still pump, yes. It just, there's no, it's, you're just pumping fuel, yeah.
But is the fu- is the, so what is the Fuel Boy syst- system doing for us now?
Nothing. We bought it outright, from my understanding, a million years ago, and we just have never upgraded it.
Okay, but if, but if we can't turn the computer off, but we don't use anything from it, why not just try to figure it out?
Well, I should say nothing. I do, I, every month, I take a, a reading from it and the guys will go and put a stick into the tank and make sure the readings are, are coinciding. However, that's only for gasoline. We do not have a way to track our fuel, diesel fuel.
Okay, and the new system would allow us to track both fuel types?
Correct, yes.
And in a well-integrated manner and, so it sounds like the Fuel Boy system's pretty much just a monthly, how much did we track? And then someone dips the stick in and says, how much did we actually pump?
Right.
And so it's a very gross reconciliation.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it allows to do bottoms-up budgeting on both gas and diesel, because what we could do is present a budget based off of projections of the usage and the.
And we'd be able to track various usages over time and it's like, hey, why, why, it's like, why is this department suddenly using more?
We'd be able to track by department too.
Well, I'm thinking, we could actually break out, we could actually break out from a, from a, we could do kinda, actually break it out by department eventually.
Well, that new system should help with like state reporting too.
Right.
Cause I'm assuming they're doing that by hand now?
Right, yes, so all of our, um, we do do the fuel procurement, we do take part in that every year and they, you do have to give an estimated usage of what you're meant to be projected to be using and it's all based off my Excel spreadsheet, which is pretty valid, but it is, it's pretty dinosaur stuff, so.
I mean, it's.
Is there any ongoing, uh, recurring expense, like, once, once this upgrade is done, would there be recurring maintenance expenses or subscription?
Um, yes, there is, and actually, um, part of that forty thousand dollar request does include three years of that maintenance fee. They do have a monthly maintenance fee, which includes, um, any upgrades, twenty-four seven customer service, all that, like, normal, mogo jumbo. Um, and I believe it's, I, I have to look, I wanna say it's twelve hundred dollars for the year, for, for twelve months. Um, and that's, you know, for however long, but we actually did, I talked to Jacob too, to see if it's something that Jacob's knowledge and it actually turns out that he is, um, well-versed on this particular, I forget the, the terminology that you use, but anyway, Jacob at one point would be able to, to essentially take over as the software.
Administrator.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so, you know, they do, they do kinda require you to be on it, though, for at least three years.
Hmm, okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, the, the select board is currently, uh, has that article in the warrant and is recommending it. But it's like, but we did want, uh, we did want you here to be able to, so that when we get asked questions, we can answer.
Yeah, oh yeah, so it's one seventy.
No, do you need to process?
No, I just need to review that.
Okay. I do, well, I do, I, I was thinking I might need to run due, but, alright, so.
Did they ever go down and, and, did, did, not while I was here, no one ever did recommendations?
Do I need to go get my charger?
Sorry, advisory, is there anything else we, that, that you would like to see discussed or discuss with us with regards to the operating budget for the warrant?
Well, you might've gone on the week I was gone, but.
Cause they're on the agenda, we're here, we got the, we might as well close it off.
The, the, my, my only point was, we had come in, I think we had met the chief in the middle of what we recommended to be between the fourteen or, or the eighteen, originally it was fourteen, and then it went up to, to eighteen with an addition and then I think we had voted sixteen, but I mean, we're, we're not averse to going up another two thousand.
Yeah, I mean, your, your recommendation is your number. If you wanna talk to us about our recommendation, uh, now's the time.
No, no, I don't think, all I'm trying to say, Tom, is that I don't think that anything else the chief could add would, would help influence our division one way or the other. We're just discussing here, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think we probably.
Just one other thing on that, is that, you know, at the time, we weren't, we didn't know really, the level, the level limit was still somewhat unclear.
Mm-hmm.
And all the numbers were unclear, so we were trying to take a knife to pretty much as many things as we could, not knowing what the level limit was gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
That was really, the only modus we could, you know, only speaking for the, not the, the, uh, president committee. But that was my, uh, thing to just kinda cut it in half, save a couple bucks here.
Mm-hmm.
But bottom line is, I mean, the eighteen thousand is really not, not a big deal and I don't have any issue with that at all.
Alright, so let's go ahead and take a vote and then we'll leave. A roll of German, who wanted any others?
Our motion for the.
For the eighteen thousand?
Still eighteen, Peter?
Yeah. Eighteen. I'll, I'll second, I'll second the eighteen thousand.
I believe the request is for eighteen.
All of it, I, alright, so.
And just one thing about his request, that we, the sixty-six thousand five hundred for the fire wages, I did ask the chief and he said it wa- is before COLA. So we did give the sixty-six thousand five hundred and we won't add COLA to it.
The three point two.
Just make that one, one change and then send it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay, so. Alright. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor. Okay, alright.
Alright, Tom, I'll send you my spreadsheet later.
Thank you, I'll sa- I'll send you my numbers, th- they will not have your updates in. I, I don't, I will tell you if I get your updates in before or after I send them.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Or if you wanna send it to me and unlock it and I'll do our updates and send it back to you, whatever's easier for you.
Uh, just send me your numbers.
And again, I respectfully request that before the warrant book goes anywhere, at least if I get a chance to take a look and just double check. Cause, cause our numbers are not, the bottom line number is, is more or less the same, but I noticed a lot of differences.
Right, yes.
Well, father, appreciate the crew and sun here going all over the color of the town. If we continue to do that, if we let it slip a little bit each year, then some of us that are still gonna be here in ten years will be sitting here asking questions of people from the Collin Center when we do it all over again. Cause we love this thought so far too long.
Laurie, Laurie says I can't do that again.
I appreciate the diligence, I would not want to assume committee ever, but it's, it's a long stand and unfortunately, that type of thing also sets up the constant, this and the Central Street versus that, some, and the Central Street, so.
Laurie, you get all the angry people.
No, I'm not doing another salary study and I'm not doing another round of retro pay and I'm not doing it. I'm standing firm on that.
Well, when the police contract settles, other than police.
I know.
Thank you all. Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you guys.
Alright, Peter, come up and join us, we can finally. I was hoping if we met last week, this would be an easier meeting, but it's like, oh my goodness, everything, and now we gotta talk about this, we gotta talk about this. Alright, so, uh, let's see, the, so, right now, our recommendation for fire is level funding on the expenses and COLA for the wages. And we wanted, and, and that, we put that in more as a placeholder and we didn't see that as a, by a sort of a, this is what we want. We just needed to do something to move the budget process forward.
I didn't, I didn't bring my budget with me, so we have just, if somebody has a copy of it, I appreciate not.
Yes, I, I, I have.
Cause I, I remember got back to you with the stuff we spoke of, spoke about, spoken about too.
There you go.
Oh god, please tell me it's gonna be bigger for ten years.
Do you want me to hand you my computer so you can see it?
No, I can, I can kind of, okay, so, so the first.
I can, I can, I can print out a bigger one, or I can have Karen do it more specifically.
No, we can, we can work on this.
Okay.
Okay, so, you were talking about level funding, was that just expenses or is that?
We level funded the fire expenses and fire utilities.
Okay.
And, oh, and also testing and fixed a- asset, fixed asset replace and repl- repair.
Okay.
So anything not wages, we level funded.
Okay, testing is gonna be a problem, cause testing is down pretty much on a yearly basis to the letter, to the number.
Tom, on the copy that I'm looking at of the budget for testing, we had it at the, at the requested level.
Oh, I apologize, um, uh, Peter, Peter, my error, we, 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 we voted the requested amount for testing.
Cause we're talking about forty bottles that have to be tested on a five-year interval. It'll, it'll come back down barring inflation on the other vendors, but that's it. I've got forty bottles that need to be tested at three hundred dollars each.
Yep.
That's, that's federal, I can't, it's a pressurized vessel, I have to have them tested every five and so we look at.
Yes.
Um, there was, there was conversation about asset. Uh, you got my breakdown in, in email that I sent each of you individually, collectively. Um, the, uh, asset usually goes, usually runs out by February, oh, did I do this? Yes, um, see, uh, asset ran out in February and since then, it's forty-six and that's actually gonna go up. It's probably gonna be closer to s- uh, well, it's gonna be over five thousand that I've had to take out of expense to cover assets
Mm-hmm.
that had that issue. So there's that, so. Yeah, we can raise asset, we can take some out of expense, but they're both covered by inflation, so.
I mean, and basically, it's like, in the past, we've typically had to top up the expense account at the end of the year because you've been.
Potentially, yeah, I, yeah, and, and that's, that's the profile of any reactionary department. The more, we'd had a record year last year, we're on track potentially for another, the more stuff happens, payroll goes up, ex- yeah, usage goes up, fuel goes up, so.
I mean, I, I prefer to, to fund the, uh, the, the asset and the testing accounts and then if it turns out that then, when they're properly funded, you have too much expense money, we can look at that and let you grow into it or trim it down depending on how close you are to it.
So utilities, utilities were at the mercy of whatever the vendors have, although probably, I don't know.
You're pretty good on utilities right now.
Yeah, and we haven't seen any of the zero invoices, thanks to the police department's thing yet.
No, we're having a, a little issue now.
Oh, thank god.
There's like forty-five forms right now, so it should kick in.
But that's gonna come back to the individual ones, not the collective one?
It's gonna come back to each individual account, because I assign the credit to everybody's individual account.
Okay, so we're months away from knowing just how that's gonna affect you.
You'll get no bills, basically, for probably the next six months.
Okay, so utility, and that came, that comes out of my individual utility?
No, unfortunately, that comes out of the new.
The collective.
Collective.
Account now.
Okay, alright, so that doesn't affect us individually, oh, yeah.
But you're doing pretty good in your utility.
Yeah, we're, we're holding our own on that one. So, okay, so utilities barring any great rate hikes and, you know, we, we can send the AG after him with that. Uh, expense, again, we're doing okay. Uh, testing, I have to keep that one. Asset, okay, we said, we've gone, we're gonna be o- over five over at the end, I'm ready to cover it out of expense. Um, I was told by a previous accountant years ago, he's like, you know, like, why do people have so many accounts? So, but this was done for transparency years ago when that was a watchword and some of us rolled our eyes at the other end of Central Street, like, the A and A, here's eight, here's millions of dollars. Um, so, yeah, as long as there's that latitude and with the end of the year transfers, it gives us even more, so.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and then, then the best part too was, you know, at the total end of it, uh, the thing you got, this, little something like that. Um, yeah, so total fire, including wages, if I'm reading it right, is what, one sixty-eight? Um, of the departments, the towns that responded my request for per cap, per resident breakdown of fire department budgets, you have the current one, with the second low, lowest, at forty-six dollars a person a year. Uh, the only, amazingly, the only one lower was Lester, and from our neighbors, I mean, worth forty-six dollars a person for fire, everything. East Brookfield's at ninety-six. I don't know. Um, so, yeah, we're doing okay on that one.
But that's a, um, and that, that's, uh, I'm just trying to understand, figures per resident? Oh, that it, that, that's a per resident number.
Yeah, per resident per year. And I have some pretty much everything that you, everything your town, uh, votes for, zero, zero, one, two, two, oh, and give me your number of people. And that's why I broke that one down. So it, it was more of a fun fact, if you wanna use it as such. There's nothing fun about it, but still. Um, so, yeah, the wages, uh, the wages, there was this break, the breakdown, which went in with my original packet, it looks like that. And that was based, that was based anecdotally right across the board. This is the number of calls, this is the average monitoring of time, this is the average number of people, this is the rate of pay.
Mm-hmm.
This is the number of training, this is the number of people, this is the average rate of pay, and that's those three. And when it all came down to, uh, with a little bit of rounding, uh, sixty thousand dollars, if we just did it at that and we didn't factor in the call volume increase, and amazingly, well, I, I don't wanna jinx it, we are having decent recruitment, whereas my neighbors are not, uh, I looked at just, give me seven percent more non-COLA for increased training, not additional training, but training more good people.
More people.
Um, and again, the state took three of my people away from me, key people we need to work on replacing. Um, call volume, we did, what did they say, one forty last year and we're at like one fifty, the three retirements. So at that one, um, bringing the assistant chief up to a more manageable level, uh, so again, uh.
So there's assistant, there's a, is a bump on the assistant chief in there?
Uh, yeah, on this page. It's not broken down individually, but he's not, a separate one on there, it's, it falls under the greater.
No, I, I, yeah, I.
So at that point, you're looking at, uh, you know, a fire department wages budget, not counting the chief of sixty-six five, which is barely one full-time equivalent. And if you throw a fire chief in at eighteen, being optimistic, now you're in the eighty range, you're still barely above a one point three full-time equivalent. We're a pretty decent deal, so, I mean. Yeah, you're gonna be this big before town meeting, or you're driven out of there by the annual pitchfork and torches parade.
Mm-hmm. They want a bunch of paper to start the fire though.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question.
Thank you.
If you were.
Go ahead.
Do you know how much time you spent in calls alone this last year?
Uh, oh, I got. I had, based on that form, uh, I did the math on projection based on, of, a, a one-year, the last full year that I had data for when the budgets were due, so I had a hundred, I was factoring in. the last full year that I had data for, when the budgets were due, so I had a hundred, I was factoring in a hundred and seventy-one incidents, averaging a twenty dollars an hour, times four people.
Well, how many hours per incident?
Yeah, that's what I got, see if I calculated that. And when I looked at where the bottom line came for our, our current one, the, the math kind of backwards checked out. You asked me to remember math from months ago, and that's not.
Cause, uh, I mean... At two point five hours per incident, a hundred and seventy-one callouts at forty-five dollars an hour, that'd be nineteen, that'd be nineteen thousand dollars for the year.
I'm sorry?
I said, my math, a hundred and seventy-one incidents, two and a half hours per incident.
But they're not all, we're, we're dropping down at one hour minimum, not all of them are, are one, some of them are just one person?
Yeah, I'm not, okay, okay, fair enough, yeah.
So, but then went back to the math, I did all this, and then after some time, and I went back and said, okay, this is a reasonable, based on using existing numbers to justify projected numbers, it kind of worked. Because if, if I'd come in like really close, I wouldn't have, but we were, we were there, because what was it last year? What was my wages last year for somebody who was better outside?
Uh, let's see, the current year is fifty-eight, seven, ten.
Okay, so, yeah, I was adding to, including the deputy chief, to sixty-six-five. And again, that's not knowing what we're gonna do for incidents, again, we're already at, uh, fifty-three. Yeah, we're at one fifty, last year we were at one forty, so, yeah, so actually, the one seventy-one incidents was a roundup based on, estimation based on previous increases, so we did one hundred and forty, figuring a hundred and seventy-one based on increases over the years. I kind of caught the math there, Beth, I believe.
So, how I managed to close my budget?
Cause, yeah, Kelly called me in like her first and second year, looking back, she says, yeah, you ended up going over, she said, yeah, we understand that it's a reactionary department, and, you know, I don't have an overtime account, I also don't have, you know, the stipulations of overtime, and also, you know, the vast majority of overtime is covered by snow and ice, I don't have that, so it's just, yeah, I mean, one good, one or two good building fires or anything, and, you know, I'll be back to see you, but hey, don't worry about those things until I enter the third, you know, enter the fourth quarter of any fiscal year, it's, it's, you know, if we have a really bad fall, I don't, autumn rather, if we have a really bad autumn, I'm not gonna freak out, because it, it'll level off.
What's your busy time of year?
I'm sorry?
What's your busy time of year?
It's, I've never really seen a cycle on it.
Yeah.
You know, the year overall gets busy, but you don't, you don't see it coming at the time. I don't wanna buy in the summer because of one particular address, but, you know, that doesn't help. But, yeah, so I think that's where I, I think that's where I made up the math, Beth, was going from a hundred and forty incidents to a hundred and seventy-one incidences. Incidences, uh, events, tracking that forward, so.
Okay. How close are we on the budget?
Uh, let's see, we're about ten thousand off, um, but, and, but that, his numbers were just, um, I would, I would say, in, uh, there were no, there was no COLA in his number, so we'd have to put a, another COLA in there, that'd be about twenty-five hundred.
Right, cause.
Twenty-five hundred, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars on wages, cause you, you, the fire chief salary, I'm not gonna put COLA on, I don't think.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna go from twelve-three to eighteen and say, what's my four percent, no, that's just rude. Um, I'll see you next year, but, yeah.
I'll see you next year.
And next year, if it's two point three, I'm definitely gonna see you next year. And I wasn't trying to beat up on them, but that's the truth. If we don't keep that up, then those of us who are still standing in eight or ten years, new people from UMass, they're standing there like.
And that's what, and that's what kind of got us in trouble, right, the one year that there was outrageously high inflation, is because we said basic, we did the Collins Center plus.
And then it was the next year, it was like eight point nine the next year.
So, uh, and that's one of the reasons why, what, what, what did we do, four, I think, this year?
Four, we, yeah, four, we've, our recommendation's been based on a four percent.
And, and that's, which is a scorch higher than what the actual, you know, COLA was, and at least, you know, we can start to.
Yeah, start to work that back.
And there's a lot of us that the four percent, you got about, not covered on our contract, nobody here is, nobody down there is yet. I don't want to throw a houseman at you people, um, that and the Central Street, that is, yeah, um, there's COLA. Amy told me before, she looked, health insurance.
Eight percent.
Eight percent. So, those of us full-time not covered by CBA, that doesn't address that, okay, that three point two on a single plan, or, you know, family plan, it's there, and that's where we start losing it, where other, you know, CBAs cover it, or other individual agreements cover it.
CBAs don't actually cover it, because, because they, they wind up getting hit, they get hit by the insurance the same way, they just.
Yeah, private sector's being hit the same way, my husband's company went up like ten percent in insurance, and his raise was not.
Right, exactly, right, we're not looking, but they.
Yeah, and, and, and trust me, the, the company I worked for did not give us a.
No, but there, there were years where the two per, you know, we did a two percent COLA, and it didn't even come close to covering, we were getting, we were getting really hit hard, and I don't wanna keep mentioning this rationalization, because the others, and the Central Street had a lot more insurance claims.
Yep.
So, they wanna go K through twelve, second. But, yeah, that's, so, yeah, so the four percent, again, not just gonna stand on that one, but I'm glad that, you know, we're holding, even their number wasn't horrible on it. When it comes to mine, my, it comes down, the Collins Center report did not cover the fire chief's position. And one of the things that came, and we're, we're seeing it, we're probably seeing it a lot, just in the last couple of months, are we gonna be able to attract replacements with what we're doing?
Right.
And, you know, so that question comes up. So, yeah, there's not even anybody on my department that would take the job for what I, and again, you need to realize my full-time thing that I'm with us for is not fire chief. I'm a full-time fire guy who happens to be fire chief. So, even at a, a mid-range of estimation of what I'm worth, um, not counting like organ donation or anything, but, um, what I'm worth as fire chief in the mid to high thirties an hour, that's an hour a day.
Yeah.
I, I like to think, my God, I've, I've been here half a week. So, that's where, and again, I know it's incremental, we'll probably take a couple of years off, or we can do another study, but when you look at, you know, I ran this one out, well, our, our Holland resident, your fire chief makes twenty-seven thousand. Yeah, and that's fantastic, I, I know Chief Grok, he's a great guy, I mean, he's probably worth every penny, but I don't wanna think that I'm not.
And that, this is the first time we've ever increased his pay.
Right, right, probably because it was pointed out, like, he's relatively new in terms of fire chiefs. He probably said, okay, I'll do it, but...
Yes.
I'm not gonna do it on good graces, and.
Right, he has no other job in town, though, and our, our department there is set up completely different. Our budget for fire employees is thirty thousand dollars, we don't, we only pay if we show up for a call. That's it, we don't pay for training, we don't pay for anything else.
Yeah.
So, it's a strictly call department.
Well, percentage of your hours is training versus.
For fire?
Yeah, for fire.
Uh, fire training, based on old numbers and the percentage, um, looking over the training, and computers can be great, in that one-year time period was nine hundred and seventy hours.
Okay.
Department-wide.
Right, but that's spread across all the, everyone who works there.
With the exception of myself and the assistant chief.
Mm-hmm.
So, coming out nine hundred and seventy hours, and an average of twenty dollars an hour came up to nineteen-four.
Mm-hmm.
So.
All right, so, and that year was, um, it's like, oh, fiscal year twenty?
Uh, ten thirty-one, twenty-two to ten thirty-one, twenty-three, which is where I needed to be when this budget was requested. That was my last full twelve months of.
Okay.
I'd only doing it three or six.
So that was mostly fiscal year twenty-three?
Yeah.
All right, so, and the budget for that was fifty-seven thou, wages budget was fifty-seven thousand, you expended almost all of it, and so that means that about one-third of your wages budget is training. Okay, that's, I just wanted to understand the breakdown.
That's on, this was in the original.
Um, you emailed that to us, right?
Uh, I emailed you, I emailed you this.
No, what I, uh, let's see.
I can move up again.
I was gonna say, I got, I, I, this was attached to the email.
Yes, yes, so you got both of these, yes, so this was as a result of our discussion, whatever your last meeting was, and just, I said, well, you know what, attachments are free, so I sent you both, just for background.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
So, question here, John.
Yes.
Does it recommend the budget? So, if we approve the COLA as whatever it's presumed, so then we're ten, five, seven, six?
Well, sixty-six-five.
We are at, well, if we, we, I, I, I can tell you now, we're at ten, five, forty-three and change. So, if we, if we add a COLA to the fire, to the, if we, if we change the recommendation for fire, and we increase what we recommend, then that's gonna push the total budget up, and we don't have a lot of headroom. And we're looking, and Lori's recommended that we get our final number about twenty thousand dollars below maximum levy to give us our, give ourselves a little cushion. And I think we're looking at about, I think, um.
What's our next?
Yeah, but you.
I think we go, uh, if we implemented, if we went with the fire department's rec, request, and added in the COLA that was not reflected in their request, we go up about twelve thousand dollars. And that means that to get to Lori's recommendation, we need to find about thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars of additional cuts in order to, um, get to that point.
I made suggestions to Jeff, I don't know if he has to belong to you guys or not, I know he evaluated the costs that I suggested in his side of the budget. I don't know if you guys, I can't read the sheet that I printed, and I'm not gonna keep attempting to try.
We haven't, I, I, I think they, they, they have some numbers that are below within ours, they, they cut the legal budget more, and.
That was one of my suggestions.
A couple others.
The reserve fund.
Uh, we took five thousand off the reserve fund, and we, we took five thousand off legal, they took twenty off legal.
I suggested twenty, ten, and then I suggested to cut the treasurer's budget in half. Those are my suggestions, and that's why they got so much lower.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we had, uh, we, we had talked about reconsidering the treasurer budget, the concern was that it was, um, if we did, if we did that, that might, we might, the concern was we might regret it when trying to fill the position.
My big concern about it was that when we outsourced that department, we couldn't outsource it for half of what our treasurer wages were.
Oh, I don't think you, I don't think you have to outsource, again, we outsourced that position in the beginning, because we needed someone with a high skill set.
Right.
To clean the mess.
Yeah.
Which is also why it took so much time, and not, um, I, I think it's perfectly able to continue the way it's going right now. Just from my conversations I've had with her, it seems to be going just fine. We have project we'd like to get started on.
Is she into the accounts, uh, is she into the accounts, uh?
All but two bank accounts, and two of our withholding accounts. So, we're still struggling with those, but as far as the legal goes, you guys aren't even close on your legal?
And so she was twenty-two hours last week, given that a lot of those hours are probably.
We're still trying to get into banks.
Right.
Um, and still trying to just get into all of the state withholding sites. So, like, all of the retirement systems you have to get into, so I've been working with them too, because you have to have a town representative that's also on the account, so I'm the back person on all the accounts. So, they've been leaving messages for me in the town hall, instead of using my actual contact number, so it's taking twice as long to get her into all of these accounts.
So, really, she was able to do all the work probably in fifteen hours?
Oh, yeah, 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 and then we're missing some information that should have been in the office that actually wasn't, so we're trying to reprint and recreate all the information.
Oh, lovely.
Just, not related to this, but you said we're way down on legal expense paid?
Yeah, that's what I just.
Would that, is it a possibility that we had a lawyer that worked for us as a town administrator that maybe cut this off KP? So that new skill set may not be there.
Kelly put it up because she's not gonna be there.
No, my observation is, I am talking to the lawyer a lot more now that Kelly is not around.
But we still only spent thirty-five thousand this year. So, I don't think there, I don't see any reason to go up to eighty, eighty's a lot, we were spending eighty on the bad years here. Sixty is sufficient.
The bad years.
I'd be wary against it, wasn't Kelly, but eighty, no, I.
Eighty's, eighty is.
You know, I think I'd be willing to, to go to the sixteen at advisory month, too.
I just think eighty's a lot for a town this size.
But what hap, you can't run out of legal.
You can run out of legal, like, you run out of every other.
I know, but if you run out of legal, you can't get money out of stabilization or anything like that.
No, you have to use the reserve fund, or you go to a special town meeting.
You have to, it's like, you can use the reserve fund if you can justify that there was an unanticipated legal expense that drew you down, right?
And that's easy for legal, because if you have an unanticipated lawsuit, which they all are.
Are they, are they really?
So, I, I mean, I, I think, I'm perfectly comfortable at sixty. I, I think it would be silly to go up to eighty.
And if we need the headroom.
I, you know.
Twenty grand.
I'm, I'm willing to come down to sixty, I'll make a motion changer, go to sixty for legal.
I'll go with it.
I'll take, uh, thank you, I was saying, I think that's a second, all right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing as there's none of all in favor of adjusting the legal budget line to sixty thousand dollars, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
What, what did we average roughly?
Can you?
Aye.
Thank you. It's like, all right.
Do you know what we averaged?
I didn't bring that with me, I had a lot of papers, but not.
I mean, you've been around longer, do you have any idea?
I don't know where we ended up, we used, to be honest, I think usually roughly somewhere between like forty and fifty-five.
There were some years where it was really bad, and it was really high, and others that was.
And what did we do in those years, we had to get it?
Well, well, you can either get it from a reserve fund, or you can do any of your transfers, and you can gut it out of like municipal.
Yeah, but do we ever go over?
Yeah, and KP at the end of the year, I mean, they know if you're out of money, they'll wait.
Yeah, they'll hold their voices.
They'll wait, they'll, they'll show up for town meeting, and they'll hold their voices, they're good.
Increase our ROI rate next year.
So, um, so that, that fifteen thousand would get us.
Halfway there.
Yeah.
But power problems are solved.
And that's assuming that all articles go as recommended?
Um, this is operating budget, which is separate from articles.
Okay, I'm used to them. Okay. No, but in terms of, you know, money, money available, cause there's always that kind of sigh of relief, oh, thank God that failed.
Well, that, that, that's a warrant article, and the warrant articles are generally funded out, are, are not funded out of the same money as our.
One of the things we took off of our budget that advisory didn't was, was, uh, we took out our actuarial assessment for OPEB, cause it's, cause we did one this year, correct?
Yeah, so.
Or it's about to happen.
When I actually looked into that, the weird thing is, so Amy had funded it oddly. So, the way the actuarial, actuarial study goes, you do a full, then you do an update, you do a full, you do an update. So, the budget should be going like this, so they're like five thousand seven hundred, five thousand seven hundred, so she wasn't doing that. So, the money that we budgeted two years ago, we spent the following year. The money that we have budgeted right now for fiscal year twenty-four, we're not actually gonna spend it with fiscal year twenty-five, because the, the study is for the year ending fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay.
So, we're covering the funds, so we're actually covered, we didn't even need the money.
Okay, so, so it's fine that we zeroed that out?
Yeah, so when we budget it going into twenty-six, we'll need the seven hundred dollar one.
Okay.
So, it's gonna go up and down.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're good.
If we fund the fast food and kind of pretend employees, that'll decrease the OPEB logo.
Might raise health insurance, though.
We can come up with a grant that, because this is how it would work out.
You're just not quite right, Brad.
Your bluntness is right.
Well, well, you, you brought up, you know, our retirees, and you could drop that. You basically need our closer, closer longevity-eligible people who are going to retire. You basically need our closer, closer longevity eligible people who are going to retire.
You should, you have to bring it down to, it's not really here, you gotta bring it down to the school.
And there, yeah.
That's where the real longevity.
Real new food budget, wow.
Alright, so to make, to make these calculations and tracking easier, um, we've got a, let's see. I'm just looking, so we've got, right now, our recommendate, for fire, our recommendation for wages is sixty-one, oh, fifty-eight, and fire chief salary is twelve, eight, fifty-four. And removing fifteen thousand dollars from the legal budget will give us the headroom to, um, go all the way up to the recommended amounts.
My math shows that my requested plus four percent is sixty-nine, one, sixty for fire wages.
Uh, sixty, okay, that's not as.
Mine at eighteen, if you follow my.
Mm-hmm.
Request.
Yeah.
And again, sixteen, not being practical, and the fire, fire service nationwide is the best deal you're gonna get. Fire around sixty-nine, one, sixty is barely over one full-time equivalent, so. And I love when you do, when you do your request, the federal government for any kind of services figures that volunteers are worth thirty dollars an hour. So if you're trying to pay off like a beautification demand, oh, we're gonna use volunteers, so okay, they're based at thirty bucks an hour, I'm like, we don't get thirty bucks an hour, you got people picking up trash on park, before it gets bulldozes, are worth thirty thousand dollars for grant reimbursement.
Mm-hmm.
Which is great when it comes to things like Louisville, which looks great, by the way, um, yeah.
Alright, so, alright, so the new, see, I agree, my, my math is the same, the new total would be, uh, ninety-six, one, sixty with your increases in headcount and callouts, plus a four percent COLA.
Uh, I have fire department increases sixty-nine, one, sixty?
Yes, I have that number too.
Okay, am I eighteen? I only get eighty-seven, one, sixty.
Sorry, what about the eighteen thousand?
Yeah, fire department, everybody except me was, with four percent, sixty-nine, one, sixty.
Yeah.
And then my eighteen.
Okay.
Eighty-seven, one, sixty.
Can you hit enter on that number, so I can see what you had in mind?
Um, I'm not entering a number.
Okay.
No, eighty-seven, what is, what is eighty-seven, one, sixty, I'm not following that number.
My fire department, my fire department requested it sixty-six, five.
Wages plus.
Plus wages, plus four percent.
Yeah.
Gave me sixty-nine, one, sixty.
Yeah.
And then my at eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
I only came up to eighty-seven, one, sixty.
Oh, you're saying eighty-seven, one, sixty for the two wages lines combined?
Right, every, every ounce of payroll coming out of fire, so the two lines, fire department wages, fire chief salary.
Okay.
Yeah, because harking back when he was also highway superintendent, that's why the, the assistant fire chief isn't hourly because back then it was just easier for him not to have a blended wage or anything. But now also, you're not gonna find somebody to replace it, 'cause as, um, looking at what he makes a month now, adding him, this measly nineteen sixty-six brings him up to ten thousand a year.
Mm-hmm.
That's, yeah, especially for somebody that uses his own, his own vehicle, so. So that's where that's sixty-five, yeah.
Alright. Alright, and that is a, let's see, that would be a. That's five and seven. So that's, that's an increase between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand dollars on weight over our recommendation. Which was, which is, which is based purely on COLA, and not any of the other increases yet.
So, I mean, this makes sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if we reduce the legal budget, I'm still not quite sure, I'm a hundred percent convinced on the accounting, but, on the treasurer's budget, but.
You won't regret it, I'm telling you. Just do it. If, if you look back historically, how many of the treasurers you had before the outsourced, and, yeah, um, were full-time? I mean, Sandy was.
They were, they were all part-time, yeah.
Sandy was part-time, um.
She was what, thirty hours? See, no. She was thirty or thirty-two, no, she was, she was at least thirty-two, the one before her was. Jim was, cause Sandy only came in in the mornings.
Jim was part-time.
So we can't count Jim because Jim, the way Jim did business, I, I, so, I don't even wanna talk about when Jim and Betty were in this building, and what went on with the books between those two departments.
See, and I don't even know that, I, I know Jim, but I don't know what happened.
You're living Sandy out of the town.
Alright, so it's, it's, so we'll just call it, it's a part-time position, it, the amount of extra free time that happens when you have a full-time person in that office, it's just, it's too much fluff time, it's a part-time position. It's a part-time, not even twenty hours, it could be twenty if you want to call it twenty hours.
And we've.
She's very quick, we, we don't, she does not even in-home for twenty hours. And she's been there a year and a half, so it's not even like we have like a full-fledged, well-run running system. I worked with a prior trainer who had been there for thirty-two years, so we developed.
Budgeted at thirty hours, thirty or thirty-two, even though it's, I know that's not what you're recommending.
Before we get on to the treasurer, can we make any modifications to the fire department budget?
Well, well, I, I wanna have the discussion around that, because it's part of the overall headroom, but I would, I mean, I, I support.
Well, if we, if we, there is enough, there is enough, there is enough headroom now that we can make the changes to the fire department and still be under the max levy.
Okay.
And then, and then reducing the treasurer budget would be getting us further down to get closer to Lori's recommended twenty thousand dollars of headroom.
So I'll make a motion that we fund the fire wages at sixty-nine, one, sixty, and the chief salary at eighteen K.
That's the number before COLA?
After COLA, no, no, six.
No.
Sixty-nine, one, sixty is after COLA.
It is after COLA.
And eighteen thousand is, is, COLA isn't, is built into that.
Yeah, it's included.
Yeah, that's.
So why are you voting it so high?
Sixty-nine, one, sixty and eighteen?
Yeah, because the, the COLA, sixty-nine, one, sixty is with COLA.
Is with COLA, yeah.
For wages, for fire wages.
And then we're gonna vote for COLA, at the attic?
No.
No, sixty-nine, one, sixty is already, has already had, it reflects a COLA, a four percent COLA.
Yes.
So these, these are, these are final numbers, I, I, I see these as final ones.
Okay, so good.
Alright, uh, okay, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of the, of the motion for the fire department, um, budget lines, uh, sixty-nine, one, sixty for wages and eighteen thousand dollars for fire chief salary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that is done, so, six-nine, one, six-zero, eighteen thousand, alright, so those numbers are done. Don't worry about that, oops, it's just telling me something's different farther over.
There were two things, 'cause I've heard like, well, they submitted without COLA request, the budgets always come through, like, do not just factor your requests, don't factor in COLA. So then I see the head table saying, well, they submitted a COLA, we were told to. I'd much rather hear about departments that factored in COLA going in, being told, don't do that ever again, rather those of us who said, okay, we're told not to, and I didn't. And the other one is from historical, going back to the late nineties, I've been twenty-six.
This year, I think we sent out guidance saying to put in the four percent, and then people still were all over the frick.
It came, it came a little bit later.
Well, I think, I, I mean, going, I know that from, from a calculation standpoint, it's very important to have numbers without a COLA, so that we can say, well, what if, what if we go with this COLA instead, or what if we go with that COLA instead? So as long as the wage requests break out, this is how much we want for non-COLA reasons, whether more hours, or pay, or, or merit increase, something like that, and then, and then here's a four percent COLA or a ten percent COLA on top of that, that's fine, because that makes the ten, that, whatever COLA they pick very easy to back out, and then from a spreadsheet standpoint, we can have a column, well, what if we have a three percent COLA, what if we have a five percent COLA?
Doing the COLA on the town meeting floor cannot be repeated, those are hours of our lives that we're never gonna get back.
Uh, I'm, if that.
Person is doing it on a home calculator.
If that happens, I will, no, I will, I will call out with the moderator and say, Mr. Moderator, those are not specific numbers. I request that the, uh, the motion be made with specific numbers for every account number and updated totals, thank you very much.
Um, but histor, okay, I'll, please, excuse, is, uh, historically based, I know because she was my mother, um, prior, we've only had a separate treasurer, I think Chief twenty-seven, right around the turn of the century, prior to that was collector treasurer, and that was part-time. And she had two, at best, two extraordinary part-time clerks, and those people stuffed envelopes and addressed, and stamped envelopes, probably about those. So you're looking, you know, well, how long have we had this, yeah, prior to roughly Y two K, it was a combined, we were collector treasurer, um, Diane was, my mother was the last co- combined collector treasurer. I know some communities are going back to it, Brenda would shoot.
I have, it's great, all over the place now.
Well, I think it's back on the upswing again, it used to be real popular, and it dropped, and now it's, it's coming back again, but yeah, so if you're looking, you've only got about twenty-four years of, well, how much has the treasurer time actually been? Prior to that, it was one big desk, so.
Alright, um, budget-wise, we are thirty-five hundred dollars below the maximum levy. So you might wanna find a little more headroom.
Micro.
But, but I believe we're done with the fire department budget, so I think we can let Chief Martel go, let's go.
You just don't like the running con.
We're just, uh. No, we don't even leave, it's, it's, it's like, it's like, it's like ripping the Band-Aid off, 'cause you're gonna walk out, and we're gonna go, I wish I could leave. Just, just don't do neener, 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 too loud.
Oh, no, I don't do that.
The Berkshire fire, it's very great.
Uh-huh, thank you.
It's the way people wanna be talked to, you know, the other songs coming, nobody wants to hear about the re- 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 I, which is being affected by this. That's gonna be windy.
I don't anymore, either.
Alright, thank you, sir, alright, um, reserve fund, do we wanna trim that down a little, another five? And that's, that to me seems like a fairly straightforward one.
'Cause we haven't spent a penny of it yet this year, correct?
Uh, that is correct, 'cause they, the, the video server is coming out of town on improvement.
They approved, um, forty-five hundred.
Oh, for the security, if you remember.
Nope, we had to bring it in on that one, um, we did election wages and expenses.
Okay, so.
It was one extra election this year, and it did not get budgeted.
Oh, that's right.
So, was thinking twenty-five for reserve?
Uh, I think advisory went for, they went ten grand less.
Yeah, and that would be twenty-five, 'cause we, yeah, 'cause we, we'd already trimmed five thousand off at last week's meeting, so this would bring, this would align us with advisory.
Yep, uh, yes.
Okay.
And Lori, just game planning disaster scenarios, if the, um, it, what would happen to the budget if we passed the budget expecting a certain amount of state aid, and the state aid came such that we were, we would have to be over our levy limit to do that? We have the special town meeting figure it out?
The budget, um, the state almost guarantees that they'll be finalized by the beginning of June.
Okay.
There's only been like two years, and it was like a group of years, that they didn't finalize the budget by June.
But I, but I guess the question is, but, but once we approve our budget at town meeting, then if the state finalizes the numbers, and let's just say it's, it's a disaster, and it, and state aid's a hundred thousand dollars lower than expected, and blows, it blows a huge hole in the budget, what happens?
You either have to have a special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And revote your budget, allocate the funds from stabilization or whatnot.
Or reduce it.
Reduce it, or you try and make it up yourself on the recap. And adjust your local receipts if you think you can, or, you know.
Local, or group new growth.
Maybe new growth is not what we have it estimated at, 'cause I don't think Al actually gave me a number, I'm just using a super conservative average.
I was gonna say, we've got massive new growth right now.
Right, and when I do the budget.
Al didn't give you a number?
No, because he said it wasn't certified, and every time I ask him for something lately, he just says, I'm, I'm gonna keep that to myself, and, until I have it approved.
Al's always been conservative with his new growth numbers.
So I have it in there right now as fifty-five, which is actually less than we got last year, last year we had fifty-seven and some change was our number, but fifty-five is actually an average.
We have way more, we have way more building permits out there than we have historically.
Right, but only the assessor can actually give me a true number, and he didn't give me it, so.
Got it, okay, um.
It's odd, I, I mean, I'm sure it's not certified yet, I don't have a single town that's certified yet, but, I mean, usually an assessor will at least go in and add up the building permits and give a really good estimate.
Yeah.
So chances are you, you do have a little bit more legal growth than you think.
Mm-hmm.
But it's safer to go conservative.
So with the idea of the treasurer wages, our treasurer, bringing that down to thirty hours, which would be effectively three quarters, three quarters.
Yeah.
Drop that to sixty-five, which is a little over three quarters, but it's a nice round number, and I don't feel like calculating exactly three quarters of eighty-three thousand.
And you probably wouldn't even need that all for next year, and realistically, if you stuck with the same person, you could take one plan off of the health insurance.
But my thinking is that would get us, dropping to sixty-five thousand would be eighteen thousand dollars, and that would, that would get us to our target headroom of twenty thousand dollars, with the thought being that where our state aid numbers are the, are the, are the conservative set of numbers, we have a conservative new growth, and we have this levy headroom, which I think is all good.
I think the one thing I would like to do, though, is if we take it down to sixty-two, four, which I'm fine with.
Okay.
Okay, or do you say sixty-five?
I said sixty-five.
Sixty-two, four is what, um, at forty dollars an hour, thirty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year, as if vacations didn't occur and all of that, it's sixty-two, four.
I'm fine with that number, you've put more thought into it than I put into mine.
If, if my math is correct, and, but my thought would be is that we actually double the assistant wages and actually get a real.
A real assistant?
In place.
Yeah, someone who can.
When I met with both Brenda and Sharon, neither of them want an assistant in the office full-time, or part-time even, because neither of them have the actual work to give them. They think they need more sitting there.
Really?
Doing nothing. Brenda takes advantage of the senior workers, and uses that, and the few times she's hired an assistant, it didn't work out because she wasn't giving the person many hours. Um, the only thing they both did say is they both would need at least one to two weeks a year for vacation coverage. What I've done in other towns where I have two separate people is they cover each other.
Yeah.
If they're off on opposite weeks because they're both funded and able to collect money. Um, so that is an option, but both of them said they wouldn't be able to give someone actual work. Which has always been the problem, I think, when we've tried to hire assistants years, and if the people who last long-ish, and then we give them four hours a week, and they left.
Got it. Okay, I'm not wedded to it, so I'll make a motion that we go to sixty-two, four for the treasurer's office.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, seeing as there's none, all in favor of going to sixty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for treasurer wages, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and look, someone changed the number for me.
Because I was the one that basically said not, hell no, we won't go from full-time on the treasurer.
But if you look back to the salary study, we have rough numbers in there for the treasurer, and they weren't to match up to what we're paying the, what we're gonna up the collector to.
Mm-hmm.
Because they are matching positions, and then it just was blown out of the water two years ago. So this actually.
Right, so.
It does.
Alright, and that brings us to a headroom of almost thirty thousand dollars, then two hundred dollars.
Close enough.
I think our work here is done.
When are we gonna have those numbers?
Um, hopefully, the state will send something soon, I will double check with Al again to see if he can give me something for new growth, because if he's thinking like twenty thousand more, then that's a lot of headroom, if you guys had cut something or left something off, like now you were thinking maybe you want to add back, just if he has that much more new growth.
I think just about everything that we cut, we, we haven't made any cuts we felt were like drastic.
Or left something off, I guess, I should say, if there was something that needed funding that didn't get funded. But I'll double check with Al again, and hopefully, and we're waiting on the Senate right now, that's where it stops.
Mm-hmm.
That never happens. Never.
Alright, is there any more discussion on the budget?
No.
No.
Alright, so therefore, uh, let's see.
Fire could be.
I believe number seven, agenda item number seven is done. So I think four is important enough, we should take that one on.
Oh, I, can we just, uh, so where we're at is, right now, I'm trying to hammer up.
Yeah, town administrator candidates.
Town administrator candidates, alright, so Mr. Aponte and I had a lovely couple of discussions, uh, he's really excited to potentially come work for us, um, he really thinks that they'll be a good match.
Mm-hmm.
I think he'll be a good match. On salary, he was willing to accept the ninety-three that's currently on our budget, provided we found a way to get him to basically a hundred K net, and he expressed zero interest in our insurance. So I'm trying to work with KP to come up with some language that within the contract that allows him to get compensated for opting out of our insurance. So the net cost to the town would be, um, the same or less than if he took the insurance, and that gets him to basically an annual compensation total of a hundred K. Um, so, um, and then there's some details around amount of time for notice if, if we chose not to continue his employment, um, and the, the mechanism around continuation of employment, uh, that we still need to work out some of the details and some of the language. Uh, but I would like a vote tonight that provided that we can get to acceptable legal terms around those pieces to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
Um, let's see, from a, the money, the money is in the budget for, to do what you want to do.
Yes.
Is that, will we need to rejig the budget at all to do it, or can we do it with the budget as it's currently structured?
My understanding is we can do it with the budget as it's currently structured.
Okay, then I have no concerns.
Okay, so.
So is that the motion?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Alright, uh, alright, as there's no discussion, uh, all in favor of best motion to, uh, uh, please say aye.
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 And just to, just to clarify, I'm trying to target a start date of the fifteenth, which is one of the reasons why I'm asking for the purview to just iron out the language and get it done.
Mm-hmm.
And that way we can still try to hold to, hold to that timeline or something close to it.
The fifteenth is a Wednesday, is there a particular significance to that date?
No, I don't remember.
Other than being the middle of the month? Just thinking about it, it's targeting the, um, twentieth on a Monday might be a, a smoother start rather than a week, it's, it's, it's like, I'll, um, we, I don't, we didn't, we didn't vote on a, I don't think we voted on a start date.
We did not.
It was, it was noted as, as aspirational, so I just wanted to comment on it.
Yeah, so, um, and we can still discuss it because it's part of the agenda item even if we voted it, so, um, fundamentally, you could say it could start as soon as we wanted him to, so I just, I, I just had in my head the fifteenth, so it could be the thirteenth, it could be the twentieth, so, um, but he was ready to just start, right, with a little bit of notice, so, and he's a ready-to-start kind of guy, so.
He's sharp as a guy who's not going to sit around waiting.
Yeah, no, no, no waiting there, no dust, no nothing, no nonsense, but nice.
Yes.
So.
Alright, and so, alright, anything else to do there?
No, but that'll just, that'll allow me to just get her done.
Alright, agenda item number five, vote to rename fif, three hundred and fifty donations account to cultural council donation account.
I'll make a motion to rename the three hundred and fifty donation account to the cultural council donation account.
Sorry.
Uh, any discussion, seeing as there's none, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize John Couture as the building inspector for property owned by Jeff Taylor.
Sorry.
Alright, and for the home audience, um, Jeff Taylor is our building inspector, and he is not allowed to issue himself a permit by law, which makes a lot of sense, and John Couture has volunteered to offer his services to the town, uh, he's the Eastbrook Field, um, building inspector. So we will have a proper building inspector doing this, and one who can legally do the permit. Uh, and with that said, for the, for the home audience, I, I want people at home to know what we're talking about. It's like, and I love the sound of my voice, thank you very much, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, um. And.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michelle Mandela and Crystal Roberts to the cultural council.
Sorry.
Alright, um, all in favor, um, sorry, all in favor, please say, uh, please say aye, or aye.
Motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for four one twenty-four, four four twenty-four, and four twenty-six twenty-four.
Sorry.
Two sets.
Alright, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Make a motion to acknowledge the fire department report for March twenty twenty-four, and EMS report for March twenty twenty-four, is there anything in particular that was out there that we want to call out?
Aye, just look at them yet, and.
Oh, yeah, there was.
Oh, we have a firefighter anniversary? Jesse Mary, um, three years.
Daniel Uster and Chris Kelly and Tom, uh, all four years.
Oh, on the emergency squad, oh, thank you for, I, I went right past that one. Alright, uh, let's see, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion and seconded on this one, right?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor of acknowledging the fire department report and the EMS report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, someone get me out of here.
Um, second.
Alright, all in favor of adjourning this meeting at ten oh two, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank God, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.